Good evening and welcome to the January 24, 2012, meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Minuchkin.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman.
Here. Tonight's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Najarian.
If you'll all please rise and place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there an invocation tonight?
I'm sorry. The invocation will be delivered by Reverend Skip Lindeman of the Lockheed Island Congregational Church.
I understand we have a heavy meeting this evening, so a little humor. Christmas was a month ago. What do you call a Christmas decoration made of hundred-dollar bills? That's Aretha Franklin's. Okay. Shall we pray? Oh, God, we thank you for this day and for all the blessings you have poured upon us. We thank you for the offices we hold and for the trust the people have placed in us. Let everything we do this evening be for the greater good of all the people and in accordance with your holy will. Let us treat each other with respect and let us see your light in every human face. Amen.
Thank you. Can we hear your report, please?
Thank you. The agenda for the January 24, 2012, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, January 19, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item?
Presentation and appointments at 3B is the agenda preview for the meetings of January 31, 2012.
Thank you. Ms. Beers.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, for January 31, we have no Housing Authority or Glendale Redevelopment Agency business agenda items. For that evening, we have a Glendale City Council at 6:00 PM, and we have a couple of items under consent. Director of Public Works updating the city's bicycle master plan and citywide bike parking. Director of Human Resources customized management and leadership development training for eligible employees. Under adoption of ordinances, we have an ordinance approving the public sale of surplus city-owned property located at 3445 Altera Avenue. We have a number of action items. Director of Public Works proposal to conduct a road diet test case on La Crocena Avenue between Verdigo Road and Montrose Avenue. Director of Community Development Monterey Road Eco Community Gardens annual report to the city. Director of Information Services, this is regarding consulting services and implementation assistance to configure a new master active directory, migrate the city's email system to it, and set the standard for the migration of all city active directories into this new master system. And under hearings is the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, and this is regarding water rates restructuring and increase. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I believe Mr. Ochoa has a late-breaking announcement about tonight's meeting.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, we are asking that we pull item 8C, which is in regards to the GWP update on smart grid and the opt-out of the smart meter program. We are intending to mirror the CPUC California Public Utilities Commission's findings and rulings. They have made preliminary findings in this matter, but have not made final findings. So we would ask that you basically hold over that matter until such time the CPUC does make their final position known.
Do we need to vote on that?
No.
Okay, so that's been taken off calendar, so just to be clear, we will not be discussing smart meters tonight. Those of you who may have come for that, I apologize. We will certainly give you notice as to when that item will be coming back. Okay, next item?
At 3B is presentation of national awards earned by City of Glendale from Keep America Beautiful.
Thank you. And to accept this, I believe that we have Keep America Beautiful representative Cecile Carson, who's a VP, and Leonard Robinson, who's the board chair. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and our wonderful residents of the City of Glendale. It's my honor to be here on behalf of Keep America Beautiful. Keep America Beautiful is a national nonprofit organization that works with local communities to help them be the best that they can be, and in the case of Glendale, they're helping Keep America Beautiful be the best that it can be. Glendale has been a model for Keep America Beautiful affiliates, and we are honored to be here tonight to recognize what is really the day-to-day operations that your community does in keeping it beautiful and clean, and not only the work of the staff, but more importantly, that the residents of Glendale have set a standard themselves to say, "This is who we are as residents of Glendale," and that shines out in the applications and the materials that Keep America Beautiful received. You know, our research shows that through the efforts of our affiliates to prevent litter and to have beautiful gardens and landscaped areas in the community and to handle their waste properly, that we not only build that pride, but we also strengthen our economies, we provide for jobs, and we lower our crime rates as part of that process. And through the proactive efforts of the Neighborhood Services Department, the members of the Beautification Commission, and the residents of Glendale, as I said, you really are a shining example. And you bring together what we say is the best of the best, bringing businesses, civic organizations, and the government together in what is the ultimate civic engagement process for Keep America Beautiful. So we, as an organization, see and thank you as elected officials for helping us meet our mission, that individuals will take responsibilities for improving their community environment, and that Glendale is a shining example in our network that becomes a model for all of our affiliates. And I'd like to welcome Leonard Robinson with some comments from Keep California Beautiful.
Thank you.
Lift this up a little bit. It's hard being 6'4" in a 5'11" world. Well, my name is Leonard Robinson. I'm the president of Keep California Beautiful. Keep California Beautiful was formed in 1991 through Governor George Deutmagen, and we're a public-private partnership. We include state government, local government, and businesses. Our board includes Disney and McDonald's, you know, from big businesses to small businesses. And our mission is to support individual, community, and corporate volunteer efforts to preserve and protect California's beautiful natural resources for generations to come. You know, I say that. I'm a grandfather. I'm that baby boomer generation, that generation that brought you plastic, toxic waste landfills, global warming, and high-fructose corn syrup. So as I think about, when I look at my grandson, I understand why I do what I do. Well, City of Glendale is a key leader in the key state as far as, you know, in these type of efforts. They're a key affiliate. They support community engagement and public partnerships to keep the Keep California Beautiful Community Network and KAB, a local affiliate program, going. The network includes 14 affiliates for KAB and many other community-city programs that are not integrated community improvement programs, but have one or two events to focus on keeping California beautiful. In fact, the City of Glendale and its residents have been engaged with volunteer community programs before there was a Keep America Beautiful and before there was a Keep California Beautiful. So that puts you in the category of being a national leader, and, you know, the beautification programs that you have here are very, very important. Matter of fact, Ginger Brimberg, a former city council member, mayor and board member of the statewide Solid Waste Management Board, involved Glendale in the original Clean Cities Commission program. They have been meeting monthly since 1985 as part of this program. Glendale's residents have a long history of implementing community beautification, neighborhood development, waste reduction, litter prevention plans for 41 years. The Keep Glendale Beautiful is made up of 15 volunteer board members representing public, private, nonprofit, just like the state, and have banded together to conduct service projects, combat blight, and make the city a great place in which to live, conduct business. Staff in the City of Glendale provide support to this volunteer program and is the key to the success. The function of the city council's program is to increase quality of life and community involvement, and it's very important. Glendale shows that different departments communicate, better collaborate for program developments and implementation to better leverage diminishing resources. In tough times like this, you've got to do so much with so little. So these volunteer programs are, you know, very, very, very important. By providing staff support for the public-private partnership, the program leverages nearly $425,000 in donated funds, donated funds, in-kind contributions, and some quantified volunteer hours to complete activities that would have cost the city much more to complete or would not have been completed at all. So I just want to finish that. A lot of studies show, matter of fact, the former LA police chief, when he was the police chief in New York, he was able to reduce crime by cleaning up the subways, keeping lights on, repairing broken glass, keeping the graffiti down. And studies show that if you keep an area maintained, you keep it beautiful, the criminal element doesn't come around because they know that there's somebody here that's to maintain it. The residents keep it. They take ownership in something beautiful. So I just wanted to thank you for your time. Thank you for, you know, supporting Keep Glendale Beautiful because they're the star on the crown of Keep California Beautiful, and we like to think that we're the star on the crown of Keep America Beautiful. So thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't get to watch the Academy Awards this morning because it was really early, but it is now my honor to present the awards. The first one that we would like to start with is the Keep America Beautiful President's Circle recognition, and this is awarded to our affiliates for meeting all of their annual requirements. You may not be aware that we require reporting, which basically means that those numbers that Leonard was providing to you are one of the pieces that we ask, so that we know how many volunteers are at events throughout the years, that we're able to provide those cost-benefit numbers, which on a national level is for every $1 given by a government source, $22 is returned in investments. And as part of this process, I like to call it the door opener. As a recipient of the President's Circle, Keep Glendale Beautiful is also open to the availability to apply for the other awards and also grants from Keep America Beautiful. So Mayor, on behalf of Keep America Beautiful, the first award that I would like to present to you and the council members is the President's Circle recognition for 2011.
Let me thank you for this award on behalf of the City of Glendale, the many staffers who work so hard on this program, but mostly on behalf of the many volunteers throughout the city who really make these programs work. And we have so many dedicated volunteers, some who are here, and they're the ones who more than anybody do Keep Glendale Beautiful. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. It's a distinct honor for me to present the next award because I heard a little bit about the planning of this one going on as it was in progress, so to say, although it didn't take very long to accomplish, and that's another reason for this outstanding feat, and that's the first-place award for beautification in nonprofit and civic organization. And this award is specifically for the Eco Community Gardens, which are located close by on Monterey Street. It was proven during the first garden that this was an effective tool for beautification, but the second garden took another spin to not only be a place of beauty and for community engagement, but also a place to use the newest technologies by something that was the first in the state of California also, and I think one of the first in the nation, and that was for the irrigation to be through recycled water. As part of these efforts was a community engagement, again, to bring together the possibility of a garden site for people in the neighborhood and those that were in multifamily areas that might not otherwise have an opportunity for gardening. It brought together thousands of volunteers through the efforts also of the Kiwanis Club and some special volunteers that when they saw that the gardens were going to be accessible were also excited to get engaged and get involved and be the first registrants to use those accessible garden areas. So Mayor, I'd like to present this award to the City Council, but to also ask that Gabrielle and Cornelia Keller from the Community Gardeners Group and Don Biggs from the Glendale Kiwanis Club to please come forward also to accept it with the City Council. Since I don't have a very green thumb, I really like to get close to these ladies.
I think it's a total op that way.
Oh, let me move this direction.
While they're doing that, I'll just say that the Community Gardens program has been such a terrific success in the city. I just hope that as we move forward, we can find more places to have more community gardens.
Yes, and I do want to thank all of the volunteers on behalf of the City Council. We're all very excited about this particular garden. I drive by it all the time and always rubberneck to see what looks good, but congratulations to all of you. It's a big plus for us.
The third award is for first place for creativity in outreach and media. Now, that one very cleverly, our communications VP says it's the COM Award, but it's for public service announcements, which is something that's very special to Keep America Beautiful because you may remember back in the 1970s, Keep America Beautiful introduced a commercial that really changed the concept of environmentalism and made people aware. So each year, we have an opportunity to recognize the local and state efforts of bringing awareness to the community through media. The bulk of the outreach for this award was through the volunteerism, "It's a Matter of Civic Pride." It was a PSA that focused on the volunteer registration campaign for the 2010 Make a Difference Day event, which is also the foothill community cleanup. The pre-registration and event day statistics proved that the efforts of this PSA were significant and that the attendance of approximately 200 volunteers for the previous four years, the 2010 event increased to 340 volunteers, an almost 75% increase over the past. So we would like to ask Mayor and Council, in addition to recognizing you for this effort, that Sophia Young, who was involved in starring in this PSA, to come forward also. That's why they had increased volunteers.
And I'm going to ask my colleague Dave Weaver to come and accept this award or present this award.
I can't figure out.
Five-seven. The other end of it.
She gets the card. She wins the card.
Thank you.
And the fourth and final award is for Keep America Beautiful, the most prestigious, and that is recognition of our affiliate for the affiliate award. We have two categories that are recognized and previously recognized, which again is one of those we've moved up another level because we have outstanding programs like Glendale that continue to be exemplary. And for the population category of 50,000 to 200,000, Glendale was the first-place winner. Now, I also have to say that I'm very envious because I was a local affiliate director in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, and I never got one of these big ones, so I hope it will find a prominent location within the City of Glendale. This is for the comprehensive efforts of the Keep America Beautiful affiliate locally. It looks at the activities that they do in all three of our focus areas, what activities in litter prevention and beautification and community greening and in waste reduction recycling. It looks at the recognition efforts that are done locally as part of what we say is our five-step process for changing attitudes because that's really what KAB is, is a behavior-based change organization. We look at how do we get facts, involve people, create a plan, focus on results, and provide positive reinforcement. All of those pieces come together as the recipient of the national affiliate award. So on behalf of Keep America Beautiful, it's my honor, on behalf of Matt McKenna and the Board of Directors of Keep America Beautiful, to present to Glendale the 2011 National First Place Affiliate Award. I got on the wrong side again.
Thank you. I think I speak for all of Glendale when I say that we are very proud to receive this award. Thank you.
Thank you. See, at the awards, California cleaned up, and then for the local affiliates, Glendale cleaned up. So you have bragging rights for all your peers up and down California that you cleaned up at the Keep America Beautiful award. So hey, we're proud of you from the Keep California Beautiful. I know Keep America Beautiful is proud of you. Keep up the good work, you know, for you and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
If it might be appropriate, Mayor, would it be possible for us to get a picture with the entire City Council so that we could put that in, the Keep America Beautiful press materials, and also for local?
Sure. Would you like to come up here and we'll squeeze together?
Right.
Also put it on Facebook, too.
Facebook's the most important.
Yes.
If you guys want to squeeze in.
Don't you want to stand up? I mean, 6'4" already.
Yeah, that's right. I guess we should all stand up. They wouldn't be able to get into the photo.
Oh, yeah, the cutting. They get behind the cutting.
They'd recognize our eye.
We don't have the chairs in front of us.
Yeah, we'll push the chairs in back.
Just let me know when to inhale.
Here's another.
Okay? Do you have us all or do you need us to squeeze in some more? Okay, next item, please.
Next item, item four, City Council and Staff Comments.
Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like, with your permission, to adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of Roberta Lee Drayman Birkenheim. Roberta Lee Birkenheim passed away peacefully on January 8th. She was 66 years old. Roberta, or Robbie as she was known to her friends and family, was the second of seven children of Jay and Dale Drayman of La Crocena. She was born in Maryland, and at the age of four, she accompanied her father on a cross-country California road trip in search of a new family homestead. The Draymans found that home in the Crocena Valley, purchasing a house in the sagebrush area of La Crocena. Roberta attended the Glendale schools, graduating from Crocena Valley High School in its first graduating class. She subsequently earned an undergraduate degree and a master's degree and specialized in occupational and rehabilitative therapy. Despite long-term health issues, Roberta devoted much of her time to collecting and organizing food donations for a variety of charities and providing social resources for the disadvantaged. She is survived by her son, Stephen, daughter-in-law, Karen, two grandchildren, Bryce and Marissa, sisters Nancy Drayman and Terri Weiser, and brothers Paul, Charles, and John Drayman, her brother Richard having predeceased her, as well as her niece Sarah Weiser and nephew Michael Drayman. Her services were held on January 12th. Her kindness, social conscience, and thoughtfulness will be missed by all who knew her.
Very sorry to hear about this passing, and we'll certainly adjourn in her honor tonight. Other comments? Comments?
I do. Mayor, while you were gone last week, I started receiving calls from residents about whether a donation to a particular 501(c)(3) organization in this community would be a bona fide tax deduction. And I'm not an accountant. I'm not even in the police department, but I did a little bit of research, and we're talking about Vanguardians. After reading through the regulations of the IRS, I had to caution that resident because there are strict prohibitions for 501(c)(3) charities on several levels. There's a strict prohibition for advocating to vote for or vote against any particular candidate or candidates. Clearly, anyone who's received the Vanguard's knows that weekly they're advocating to vote out Mayor Friedman, to vote out Councilman Najarian, and to vote out Councilman Quintero. This is a strict violation of the IRS rules. There's also a prohibition against lobbying for 501(c)(3)'s. They cannot spend a substantial amount of their time advocating a particular position that the local legislative body, and that's us, should take on any particular issue. And it's clear that this organization got involved in everything from selecting the city manager to the water rates, to the electric meters, to the fire department, to raises and pensions, on and on. It concerned me quite a bit. I thought it's perhaps best that we look into this a little bit more. So in a stroke of irony, I took it upon myself to prepare a Public Records Act request for Vanguard's. As you know, they have been bombarding city staff for years with their Public Record Act requests. But who to serve it on? Well, the IRS says you serve it on the home office of the organization. Fair enough. Where do you find out where the home office is located? Well, California corporations have to have their address, and an agent for service of process, service of process, the agent for service of process is someone that you would hand a request to in an official capacity. Well, the address listed on that Secretary of State website, presumably with information signed and signed by the corporate former formation itself, president, was 229 North Central. What luck! My office is right up the street, 229 North Central, Suite 401. So this morning, I marched up to 229 North Central, went up to the fourth floor, knocked on the door. Hello, who is it? It had the name of some security company. That was rather strange. I said, "I'm here to serve a document on Barry Allen." They all looked at me, strange. There's no Barry Allen here. Well, I said, "Well, how about Alan Silverman?" "No, there's no Barry, there's no Alan Silverman. How about Alan Silvarman?" "Mr., you're bothering me. Get out of here. What are you doing here?" I said, "Well, I'm here. This is the address that's listed in the Secretary of State as the home office for Vanguard's. I've got something to give them." She says, "Sorry, we don't know who he is. He's never been here." I said, "Well, let me leave this with you anyway, just for safekeeping. We've got a problem here. We want to serve, I want to serve on behalf of a resident, a request for his public records for the last three years, as the Internal Revenue Service says they must provide. Is there anyone here from Vanguard's who will take this? Mr. Mohl?
Kazazian?
Mr. Kazazian? Mr. Milano?
I should take it.
Well, it's for Barry Allen of Vanguard's, for Alan Silverman.
Deliver him.
And if he comes up here, I'll deliver him. Perhaps...
You can find him. Just go deliver him.
Okay, we can't take comments from the gallery. I think that Mr...
He's violating his rights.
Excuse me. Excuse me. He's allowed to speak. You can speak later.
But folks, don't worry. There's a solution to all this. The IRS has a criminal investigation form. It's called Form 3949A. If anyone would like a copy, they can do this. I'm filing one, attaching all the Vanguard's where they explicitly state who to vote for, who not to vote for, who they support, who they do not support in the elections. So I've got this form here. It's 3949. We really should get to the bottom of this, folks. That's just my point, and the charade continues to go on and on. I just want some answers, and I think the members of this community are being done a huge disservice. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other comments? I have some comments. They're not going to be nearly as exciting. I just wanted to mention a few of the things that I've attended in the last week. Yesterday, I braved the rain and the traffic to go to downtown Los Angeles to meet with the Office of Senator Barbara Boxer and her staff, along with Representative for Move L.A., the Coalition for Clean Air, Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy, and others, to talk about federal funding for some of our programs that have to do with bicycle and pedestrian amenities, programs like Safe Route to Schools, which, in which we work in conjunction with volunteers in the school system to make sure that our children have way... ways to get to school that are safe. And the bad news is that the funding for these programs, and there's a multitude of these programs, has been slashed dramatically and continues to be slashed. And members on the committee of one particular party, and I don't think it really matters, but what they've said is that they will not vote for any bill that has even $1 of funding or anything to do with pedestrian or bicycle safety. So it looks like it's going to be a really rough road in terms of getting federal funding to make our roads safer, which I think everyone in Glendale will agree is a priority here. The good news is that the city will continue to leverage all of our means to continue with our traffic safety programs, and will continue to work as closely as we can with our federal and state representatives to try to find any pots of money that might be out there to put even more money into our traffic safety. So that was one bit of news I wanted to bring you. And secondly, in case you are a regular watcher and noticed I wasn't here last week, I wanted to let you know that I was not playing hooky from City Council. I was in Washington, D.C., attending the United States Conference of Mayors' winter meeting. It was a very, very valuable meeting where we were able to join forces with mayors from all across the country to advocate on the issues that cities care about. And these are issues ranging everything from economic development to education to programs for the poor. I blogged about this, and it will be on, and I believe tomorrow's Montrose Patch, which I think is montroespatch.com if you want, you know, more details about my experiences and my impressions. But I'll just give you a few of the highlights. First of all, unlike in national politics, something that I found very interesting at the Conference of Mayors is that it was almost impossible to tell if a mayor was a Democrat or a Republican. The issues that face our cities really transcend partisan politics. You can't tell if a pothole's a Democrat or a Republican. You can't tell if housing for the poor is Democrat or Republican. Those issues tend to be much closer to home and much less rooted in those kinds of partisan politics. And it was very inspirational for me to see all of these mayors come together to work on and recommend what were truly bipartisan solutions to these issues. And it's also, I think, very important for cities to have a voice in the national stage because we most directly represent the people of the United States. When most of you have issues, you don't, you may write your congressman, but I know a lot more people probably go to their council members to talk about issues that they have in their community. So it's important for us to be able to voice your concerns to our national politicians, which is what this week was all about. So I do hope you take a look at the blog on Montrose Patch and let me know what you think, and if you have any ideas for me, I'm always open to hearing your thoughts and your concerns, and I'll do my best to address them and to pass them along when possible. Thank you. Any staff comments? Okay, next item, please.
Next item is the Consent Calendar. Consent items following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I have requests from the public to pull 5A, 5B, and 5D.
I'd like to pull 5F, please.
And we'll pull 5F. So we have 5C, 5D, and 5E.
I'll move that.
Second.
At least, I thought you said D.
D. D was pulled. And which one did you want pulled?
F. So it's C and F.
So we've pulled A, B, C, D, and F.
So C and E that are...
What's left?
Whatever's left.
C and E.
I'll move those two.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second. Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Can we hear 5A?
Sure. Item 5A is the minutes of the regular City Council meeting of Tuesday, September 20, 2011.
I have one card, Herbert Milano.
Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I want to address the issue of the minutes of the prior meetings of the City Council because I find, for example, today, you're approving minutes that are several months old, going back to September the 20th. Last week, I believe, we still also had a similar experience where it apparently takes months to receive the minutes of the, of what has transpired. Now, for those individuals who have access to video streaming on the internet, they could at least compare what appeared on the minutes to what is being video streamed. But for those individuals who don't, I think that the City Council owes this to the public to present the minutes of the prior meeting in the following week. It will at least allow us to assess how the information that is presented before you is being recorded on paper, on text. The reason why I bring this up is because for many years now, at around this time, I have brought a request to you that the comments that are being presented to you before you on agenda items and during oral communications be recorded in summary as part of the minutes. If, as previous speakers that came before you said, that Glendale promotes community involvement, as you, Mayor, said, you encourage the people to voice their concerns, and as other speakers said, that we are the shining example, why can't the message that is brought before you of individuals that have concerns be put on the minutes as part of the record? It is an incredibly difficult task to go back and try to assess what an individual said and go through all the video streaming, and it virtually takes hours to figure what the council said and what was the reply, if any. It is my belief, and I want to encourage, the City Council and the city clerk and the city attorney to find a way, as many other communities do, to record on the minutes the issues that are brought before you by the public. If we can tweet in 140 words and send that out throughout the world, we should be able to at least have 140 characters to be recorded in the City's Minutes, to record the concerns that people bring before you. I think that if you do that, you will be the shining example. I think that if you do that, you will be promoting community involvement, and you will be promoting the public to come forth, be present, and voice their concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes, can we hear 5B, please?
5B is Chief of Police regarding 2008 U.S. Department of Homeland Security Grant Program and Additional Funding awarded to the city in the amount of $577,430 for public safety communications technology. B1 is motion authorizing execution of an agreement with the County of Los Angeles for the allocation and management of the additional grant funds. At B2 is a resolution appropriating $577,430 in grant funds for purposes of procuring public safety communications technology.
Thank you. I have one card, Mona Montgomery.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Mona Montgomery. I'm concerned about a too-close relationship between the City of Glendale and the Department of Homeland Security, which is a national organization, whereas we are a local organization. The idea of accepting money from the government, the federal government, in order to give us public safety communications technology worries me because I don't understand what is meant by public safety communications technology. It sounds a lot to me like the TSA agents that we have at the Bob Hope Airport, which were put up after the head of Homeland Security, whose name was Michael Chertoff, quit his job at Homeland Security and opened up a TSA agency, which would benefit financially by setting up all of these TSA agents, which has now been done. And so now we find the head of the, the former head of Homeland Security making billions and billions of dollars to strip-search us and expose us to radiation through this wonderful technology, which everyone knows is dangerous because radiation causes cancer, which is why dental patients as well as staff have to wear thick lead aprons before they start zapping the patients in order to take the X-ray. This is very dangerous, and the person who's benefiting most is the guy who was the head of Homeland Security, Michael Chertoff, who owns the company that puts out all the TSA setups. So here we are in Glendale many years later, and we're told that the Department of Homeland Security is going to set us up with public safety communications technology. I would like, before you vote on this motion, to be very careful about what is meant by public safety communications technology and make sure that it doesn't turn out to be another ridiculously expensive and harmful-to-the-public program like the TSA setups that we have at all of the airports. Thank you.
Ms. Montgomery, you have a very interesting website. It's monamontgomery.com, correct?
Yes.
Since you had a little time, I'm happy to give you 10 seconds if you wanted to just tell people about your website.
Well, my website is monamontgomery.com. It's my personal website. I've had it for about 10 years. It's been taken down at least three times by the powers that be, and I finally learned if you want to keep your website up and don't let it get taken down by people who don't like your political views, pay the money, the $30 a year, and set up your own .com website. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The communication equipment is the ISIS, is it part of the ISIS system that we're enhancing?
Effectively, yes, sir. The SHICAP, the State Homeland Security Grant Program allocates funds largely for L.A. City, L.A. County. They have been unable to use their allocation. Thus, our police department has, and fire department have been very opportunistic in getting those funds before they just absorb back into the federal system for the ISIS program.
I'll move 5B, one and two.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Was there a second for that?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is 5D, Chief of Police regarding 2008 U.S. Department of Homeland Security State Homeland Grant Program and Additional Funding awards due to the city in the amount of $1,084,745 for ISIS radio system improvements. D1 is motion authorizing execution of an agreement with the County of Los Angeles for allocation and management of the additional grant funds, and with ISIS JPA for reimbursement of the cost of Glendale funds. At D2 is a resolution appropriating $1,084,745 in additional grant funds for ISIS radio system.
Thank you. I have one card, Richard Espiritu.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. I am Richard Espiritu. I'm very in favor of the city applying for this grant for two reasons. Number one, I'm looking forward to having PAC come in on the city with this kind of grant money coming in. And number two, the other question that I'd like to have, and I have raised this question with the Glendale Police Department on several occasions. I'm sure we're all familiar of what happened at MacArthur Park, where the Los Angeles Police Department did not have communications with the mass community. This money is to help our police department and our fire department take care of our community during some type of disaster, and it goes through all the different types of man-made disasters. We also have a natural disaster. I was wondering if any of this $1.5 million is going to be spent for universal translators so that our police cars can go down the street and tell the people where the disaster location sites are. And it's very easy because all you do is speaking into English, and you flip it into Armenian, Korean, Tagalog, Spanish, whatever you want. And I think we need to have this type of equipment, and if we're getting $1.5 million, I think we should spend at least $500 per universal translator to purchase that type of equipment. Thank you very much.
You.
Move the item.
Second.
Mr. Toto, do you want to say something?
I believe one of our police captains, Captain E., who is most directly responsible with this program, is in the audience, and I'm sure he can address Mr. Espiritu's comments.
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Weaver, roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item at 5F is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding security guard services at the Glendale Water and Power Utility Operations Center. F1 is motion awarding a contract to Cypress Private Security for a three-year term in an amount not to exceed $329,826.20, including contingency, with an option to renew for an additional two years in an amount not to exceed $237,022.50, including contingency and rejecting all other proposals. F2 is a motion approving amendment to the city's existing security guard services agreement with Securitas Security Services USA to extend the term of the contract by 60 days from February 14, 2012, to April 13, 2012, with no increase in the contract price.
I don't need a report, but I just want to make sure that we're not double-counting here as it relates to security services for our water and electric facilities. We did, as we went through the budget study session through April, April through June, and the Willdan report that was presented, it allocated certain amounts to security services by our, or patrol services by our police department to certain facilities. Is this facility included in that, and what is the allocation? Are we double-counting at this point?
No, sir. We would not be double-counting. This is for, effectively, the guard shack services at the entrance to the power plant, the Utility Operations Center, not going towards the Glendale Police Department as allocated in the Willdan report. This would be something separate and distinct.
And a reduced number of hours, too.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is oral communications. At this portion, we will have three-minute event announcements from the community. The full five-minute portion of oral communications will be at the end of the meeting at the conclusion of all city business.
Thank you. I have two cards. My first card is Leon, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, members of the council, staff. What an evening. I'm really impressed with that beautiful Glendale award we've received, and I know that behind the receiving of that type of award is the volunteer work done by dozens and dozens of volunteer groups in the city of Glendale, and this has been a Glendale tradition ever since I moved here in 1975. I'm really proud of it, and I'm proud of your participation in it, and even you're going to France to make contact with the Glendale Kiwanis Club, and our Kiwanis Club has made contact with your husband's home city, Kiwanis, and that just shows you how our community really reaches out. Now, I want to give a heads-up to the community for the event we're having tomorrow night. The event is Steps to the Summit, a really thrilling story of two Glendale residents, Hoover High graduates, who have scaled the summits, the highest summits of the seven continents in the world. There's probably a dozen married couples who've done this, and they're going to be at the library tomorrow night, and this is just a heads-up. Most of you probably have heard about this. I've talked about it for the last four weeks. I've been to the Board of Education, and I've been to all the community groups that you have contact with over the months and years of sitting here. So it's free. Parking is validated at the adjoining parking structure on Maryland, and you can get there a little early. We expect a good crowd, and it'll be very interesting. Paul and Denise Fatag, Fatak are the two Hoover High graduates, and everybody that I know of has heard of them, or they've heard of her mother, Stella Fatag, who is with the Glendale Community College, and she's also a volunteer with the G.A.R. and with the Committee for the Ethics and...
Character and Ethics. Character and Ethics.
Character and Ethics. Thank you, Arti. She's with that committee, and that committee's been working with us in promoting this particular event. So see you tomorrow night, and up on the board, you heard probably, you've seen one of our April, I mean, our February events, and we're already working ahead into our 12th year as chairman of the Author, Artist, and Friend Series for the Friends at the Library. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My last card is... My last card is a joint card of Dottie Sharkey and Susan Jakarle.
Isn't Leon cute? Is the dog here?
Is the timer on?
Not yet.
I wanted to welcome our new city manager. I'm Dottie Sharkey. This is Sue Jakarle. And we are Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation. And last year, in partnership with the city, we had our first annual Verdugo Mountains 10K trail hike and run to benefit community services and parks. So we had over 500 participants from five years old to 80 years old, and many asked if they could bring their dogs on the walk, and we told them we couldn't. So Sue came up with a great idea.
Yeah, so I've noticed going around Glendale that I, you know, there's tons of people that are dog lovers, but there's never been a city-specific event. So I thought, since I'm on the board for the Parks Foundation, I would love to hold a dog hike. So this Saturday, we're having Happy Tales on Happy Trails up at Bram Park, which is gorgeous and affords awesome, awesome views of our city and surrounding cities. So I would love for people to come out this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:30, and the first 10 dogs that come sign in and register get a free pet emergency kit with a CPR guide.
Wow.
So I would love to see you guys there. And we were supposed to have a canine with us tonight, but they're really busy, you know, taking a bite out of crime.
They're protecting us all.
Yeah. But I did my hair papillon style.
I was wondering what you did to your hair.
Yeah.
No one knows who Sue is. They just, you say purple, they know who she is.
Wait, did you say your web address?
We did not. It's glendaleparksfoundation.org. It was designed by one of our board members, Sean Sahakian. So please check out our website. Again, it's glendaleparksfoundation.org.
See you guys there.
Great event for a great cause. Unfortunately, I can't bring my cats.
You can wear some of the greatest hairstyles.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Under adoption of ordinances, that 7A is ordinance relating to the repeal of the South Brand Boulevard specific plan and amendments to Title V and Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, offered on December 6, 2011 by Councilmember Weaver. 8A1 is a resolution amending the land use element of the general plan. Should I read item B as well? Are they together, Mr. Attorney? And 7B is ordinance amending the zoning map in the South Brand Boulevard specific plan area, also offered on December 6, 2011 by Councilmember Weaver. And that B1 is a resolution establishing a fee for certain sign permits related to temporary banners.
Thank you. I do have one card. Johnny Harrison.
Don't like it?
I don't know how I'm going to top that. My hair is just coming out. It's not even changing color. So anyway, welcome, new city manager. Hang on. Because that's really about the easiest way I could say. Anyway, and being also too, as a proud business owner here in Glendale, to that aspect of clean and beautiful, that is an accomplishment, I will tell you. It sort of gets overseen. I did a little research into this group that presented the word to the city. We've done an amazing job as a city throughout, residents, you guys, businesses throughout. So that's something we should not just sort of take lightly. It's quite an accomplishment. And being a business that sponsors it, it's very proud to be part of it. So talking about the ordinances, we've been here for quite a while going through this path, and I'm going to reiterate again tonight that both yourself, as well as staff, the outreach for our community as well as businesses has been amazing. I know you hear a lot of heat through, from businesses, plus and minus, it has not been all one-sided or the other, but it has been quite a partnership to try to come up with a common goal that in turn is best for the city of Glendale. And I commend you all. And both myself for Lexus of Glendale, as well as the Brand Boulevard, our car supports this ordinance. You've done a great job. We've been challenged throughout, so thank you, as well as staff, once again, has done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I just would like to stress that you, a couple of things, and then we need to make one typo correction, if I may, if we may. You introduced this ordinance early December, and you directed staff to make certain changes, including some changes regarding the number of trees in the parking areas, which the car dealers and staff met, and the compromise that was met is incorporated into the ordinance as proposed. And we appreciate all the work that the car dealers did with staff to come to the compromise. And in addition to that, there is one correction that Mr. Kraus is going to read on the record. We have copies of the correction that I think the city clerk has distributed so that you know exactly where that is. If we may, Mr. Kraus will read.
We've got it.
He needs to read it into the record.
He has to read it into the record.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council, this would be on page 42. It's part of code section 30.33.210. Under one accessory wall signs, you've got A number, B area. It's the second paragraph that's changing, a little bit of redundancy and inconsistency that occurred as we were changing the numbers. So let me read what's going to be left in there. Area, the area of an accessory wall sign on any wall permitted a sign shall not exceed two square feet per foot of length of frontage of each ground floor occupancy which directly faces a dedicated street, dedicated alley, mall, or parking area. The second sentence is eliminated. That would have been a new one. Third sentence stays in. Nothing in this section shall be interpreted to permit the computation of allowable sign area on the basis of the sum allocation or duplication of the eligible lengths. And then the last sentence is modified a little bit. In the CA zone only, the area of all accessory wall signs, including secondary accessory wall signs on any wall permitted, a sign shall not exceed one and one-half square feet per foot of length of frontage of each ground floor occupancy that directly faces a dedicated street, dedicated alley, mall, or parking area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Glad to move, it's funny order. Moving 7A1 first.
7A1.
7A1 first.
Resolution of 7A1.
I'll second it, however. I know there were some issues regarding some of the property owners. Were those property owners contacted? And what was the response?
Okay, I'm asking Mr. Kraus to come up. They were contacted, and Mr. Kraus has the answer.
We've been in contact earlier with one of the two property owners, but per council's direction at the last meeting, you had decided rather than changing those two pockets to the new CA zone, that you wanted them left multifamily residential. So both on the change to the land use element map of the general plan, we changed that to, back to residential. And on the actual zone change, we changed that half a block on South Maryland back to residential as well, multifamily residential with the parking overlay for your direction last time.
Sorry, were the property owners notified that it was staying?
We didn't notify them, again, no. We were just relying. We gave you the list of who the property owners are. We put that in your staff report, but we haven't had any more contact with them, no.
If I may, Madam Mayor, essentially, the point that the property owners had was that they did not want those properties to be rezoned by removing them from the zone change. Then their item has been responded to, and there is no change for them to be aware of.
Yeah, they'd wanted to continue to have the right to have multifamily residential on those properties.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
And this is for the resolution first?
7A1, yeah.
Thank you. Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes.
Now I'll move 7A.
With the changes read into the record by Mr. Kraus.
Right.
Second.
Your roll call.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes.
I'll move 7B.
We have a second?
Second.
Your roll call.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, one thing, Mr. Cho wasn't here when we introduced these back in December, but conversation was raised again. I hope staff will refresh you or tell you about it. Signage for the car dealers possibly would be visible from the I-5 freeway. Been discussed years ago, it was defeated. It was mentioned the last time. We could look at it again. I or staff will be happy to tell you what that's for a future agenda item.
Your next item.
Next item, under action items, 8A is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding public sale of surplus city-owned property located at 3445 Altura Avenue. 8A1 is an ordinance for introduction.
Thank you. I believe we're going to Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Garcia, Madam Mayor, members of council, just briefly, this is the ordinance to close the sale on the publicly auctioned property at 3445 Altura Avenue. The ordinance would be, need to be introduced tonight and adopted next week, and then within the 30-day adoption period of the ordinance, at that point, Mr. Cho can sign the grant to transfer that property over to the successful bidder of the property.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
The ordinance has been introduced. Thank you. Okay, next item.
At 8B is City Attorney regarding discussion of whether to place measures on the ballot amending city charter by changing city clerk and city treasurer positions from elected to appointed positions. E1 is motion providing direction to staff.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Councilmember Weaver asked for a report regarding the placement of a ballot measure, ballot measures, I should say, to make the city clerk and city treasurer's positions, appointed positions. Currently, the charter provides and has provided since 1921 that those two positions be elected by the voters of the city of Glendale. In order to place those measures on the ballot, the council would need to adopt resolutions placing the matters on the ballot at least 88 days before an election. These matters could be placed on an election either at the city of Glendale, general municipal election, a statewide general election, or a statewide primary election, as long as the resolutions making that decision are taken at least 88 days prior to said election. The charter provision, the charter also provides the duties and responsibilities of both the city clerk and the city treasurer, and those items are listed in the report. I would note that, we noted that with respect to placing such matters on a general municipal election ballot, the estimated cost that we received from our city's election consultant is somewhere in the range between $26,000 and $47,000, depending on whether or not the particular measures require us to essentially print another ballot form. I didn't have in the report, but I do have information now with respect to what it would cost to consolidate, if the council did go forward on placing these measures on the ballot, what it would cost to put those, consolidate those with either a general election, statewide general election or statewide primary. And the numbers we've gotten back, and these are real ballpark figures, they're not hard numbers, but somewhere between $155,000 and $165,000. So it's a higher number than placing it on the, on a general election ballot. We put information in the report regarding what some of the city of Glendale's comparison cities do with respect to having either appointed or elected city clerk and city treasurer positions. In addition, I would note that there are, of 482 incorporated cities in California, there are 173 clerks that are elected and 143 city treasurers that are elected, and all the rest are appointed.
The majority are appointed.
That's correct. Lastly, I would, if the council does want to provide direction for us to come back with resolutions to put these on one of the election ballots, we'd ask that you provide us direction, whether it's the council's, the council's direction to make those positions appointed by the city council or the city manager, whether those positions would be at-will positions or civil service, what would be the timing of transitioning those positions over to appointed positions, and which election that you want us to put those on. So that concludes my report. Briefly, I'm happy to answer any questions. You may.
Are there any questions at this point?
Just want to clear again. You said it costs more to put on what kind of election?
It would be more to put this on a consolidated election with either the statewide primary election, for example, the one that's coming up in June of this year, or the statewide general election.
Well, because there's a larger field of...
That's, it's just, it's more costly to consolidate with the county than having it as part of one of our general elections.
Hmm, that would be cheaper.
In essence, if I can explain why it costs more, the larger cities end up lifting the weight for the smaller cities that consolidate with the county. The cost is distributed evenly, so it's not a fair distribution, but it's the fairest system they have.
Sounds like a normal...
So we get, we essentially get lumped in with all the other elections that are occurring on that day, and our costs end up going up.
Okay. If there's no question to this time, let me go to the public, and then we'll go back to the council for comments. My first card is Richard Aspiratu, to be followed by Mike Mohill. Richard Aspiratu? Okay, Mike Mohill, to be followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. Councilman Dave Weaver has introduced this measure to place the two measures on the ballot, the city clerk and the city treasurer's position, both appointed by the city council. Rather than the present system in which voters of Glendale choose who will hold these independent positions, this is nothing more than a power grab by our elected city officials and to limit transparency and accountability in government. Can one just imagine if we had a city attorney responsible first to the people and then second to the city council, we would have today about $21 million more in the Glendale Water and Power. Even every month, for about eight months, city activists went before the city council and said it was illegal to transfer $3 to $4 million from the GWP to the general fund. After much legal review, the city attorney advised his client, the city council, that it would be best to stop transferring this money and that the general fund to cover city salaries and pension obligations.
Yeah, you need to keep this relevant to the item again.
It is. I'm sorry.
You could draw a nexus for us.
I'm talking about, I have my three minutes. I'm going to, please, Madam Mayor.
But your three minutes have to be in regards to this item.
It is germane.
Okay, if you can just draw a nexus.
Councilman Dave Weaver likes to remind the public that Glendale is the third-largest city in the county, and would like to remind Mr. Weaver to change the city charter to have city attorney elected by the people and not under the thumb of the council. After all, both the city of Los Angeles and Long Beach have their attorneys responsible first to the people.
Speaking about the city attorney is not relevant. This is about city clerk and city treasurer. If you can please keep it...
Yes, I just want to remind the people in the viewing audience that this is nothing but a power grab by the city council. If the, if the original city fathers wanted this position to be elected, why don't we keep it that way? Why do we have to cherry pick? Why do we have to cherry pick? I think our founding fathers were right, bottom line, unless you had other ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Herbert Milano, to be followed by Harry Zabos.
Mayor Friedman, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. The city of Glendale is different in many respects from other cities. Because when it comes to city elections, Glendale has been troubled by a long history with ethnic conflict and often outright bigotry that comes out during the elections. Glendale has not come to terms with its ethnic diversity. This issue about making the city clerk a non-elected position was never brought up during the terms of the many years that Doris Tweed was the city clerk. Why not? But it is now that we have an Armenian as a city clerk. Even though during the ABC referendum, for example, during Doris Tweed's time, many people don't know that she was an employee before she was nominated as a city clerk, we actually had a manipulation of the voting places in Glendale during the ABC referendum and the Americana. It was changed from the usual place that it was, because I voted many times in Glendale, and it was moved to the schools, to the elementary schools, where the demographic of having a younger person, a younger mother with children, were the demographics that were more favorable to the Americana at Brand and the zoning change that was being presented. You see, when someone has been a city employee, there is a successive amount of pressure for them to comply, and these elections are very troublesome. We had another problem during the last election where the banners to promote voting was all done north of Colorado, not south where most of the Armenians reside. Why? This is the last thing we need is for this issue to be brought up, to create additional devices in the city during an election and to drive more votes on individuals that feel that there is something wrong that has taken place so far. The elections under Mr. Arti Kazazin has been, and I, thorough, comprehensive, and responsive, much more so than they have ever been. This issue is a ploy to create devices during the election, and this city should not permit that. The same situation occurred when Mr. Rafi Manukian ran for city treasurer. It was never a problem having an elected official being in charge of the city treasurer's office, but it was when an Armenian decided to come in and run for that election. office, but it was when an Armenian decided to come in and run for that election. Look, I've been in Glendale for a long time. You know, I raised my children here, I voted numerous times, I have, I had a business here as well, I know what's taking place. This is an issue to raise ethnic conflict at the time of the election, and it should not be permitted.
Harry Zavos, followed by Ron Baruchy.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a citizen of Glendale, and without any reflection on this counsel intended, our founding fathers believed that power corrupts and absolute power corrupts absolutely. And so they delivered to us a government which today consists of separation of powers. We have a president elected by the people through that antiquated and filtered through that antiquated Electoral College. That's the executive branch, and we have a legislative branch elected by the people of the state. They have their representatives in Congress. Our form of government really has all power, important power residing in the council. It essentially has the power of the executive, and the executive consists of its employees, and it has the power of the legislature. This suggestion that the clerk and the treasurer, who are two charter officers who are not employees of this council but are answerable to the electorate, is to simply focus more power in the council. And it's particularly disturbing to me when it comes to the city clerk. That office is in charge of elections, and in a close election, whether there is or is not influence on a city clerk who is an employee and subject to being dismissed by the council, even if there is none, in a close, close election, there can always be the appearance of such undue influence, and that's something we do not need. Now, I don't have strong feelings about the treasurer. I haven't thought that deeply about it as I have the clerk. But, Madam Mayor, if you'll permit me, it seems to me it's far more, I would easily trade the treasurer being an employee of the council than the city attorney. I would prefer that the city attorney, for example, be elected by the people and thereby not be the attorney for the council, but represent in his independent judgment, and not the judgment of the council, what are the best interests of the people as a whole.
I have a question for you, Mr. Zavos. So I'm just curious, so are you saying then that it would be undemocratic to let the people of Glendale make these decisions?
No, I'm not. I'm, the charter, if there is a charter, it's going to be voted by the people, and if the people decide that they want more power to reside in the council, they'll do it when they vote on the charter. I would, I think it would be nice if they had an opportunity to see whether or not the city attorney should be answerable to the council or to the voters. I have no problem with that, and even if I disagree with the decision of the electorate in this society, I don't give up my view, but the majority prevails.
Okay, so just so I understand your position, because I put a lot of stock in your opinions, given your legal background, so you're saying that you would be against, you personally would not vote to make that change in regard to city clerk, but you don't have a problem with that going on the ballot for the people to decide?
If this, if I were on the council, I wouldn't do that, because I would vote my conscience, and I would feel it was unwise policy. If three individuals here think it's wise policy to disagree with me and think that the clerk should be answerable and employee of the council, then they are the ones who are in a position to put it on the ballot, and then the voters will vote one way or the other. Yes?
Thank you very much. Ron Baruchy, and then my last card is Arti Kazazin.
I didn't know this would be so exciting. My name is Ron Baruchy, and for the past 12 years or so, I've been the city treasurer. I've kind of made some notes here, hopefully to kind of clear things up as far as the city treasurer with regard to the city treasurer's position. I should note that my comments are strictly on the city treasurer's office and not on the city clerk's office. Let me start at the beginning. I'm in favor of appointing the city treasurer rather than the current elective process. Why? Because it would be best for the city. And first and foremost, we need to always do what is best for the city, our first consideration. The city treasurer has two duties: banker for the city and chief investment officer for the, for the city, and managing the city portfolio currently at $400 million. What's best for the city is to make sure that we get the most qualified, the most experienced person as city treasurer to manage that $400 million. The current elective process doesn't do it. In fact, it works against what is in the best interests of the city. Currently, there is no ability to put background, education, experience, or other qualifications on the ballot. Anyone can apply who wants to apply. Now, if that isn't bad enough, the current elective process works against qualified and experienced people. I don't know how many prospects I've talked to in the past few years where their interest in the position ended when they realized that they would have to campaign to win the right to be the city treasurer. Conversations would go something like this. Now, let's see. I need to put together a campaign committee, hmm, okay, and I need a campaign plan, and then I need to run a campaign. How long does all of this take? Five to six months at a minimum? I need to raise money to do the job that I know I can do as city treasurer, and I may even need to put my own money into that campaign? Isn't that all a huge distraction? These demands could put my current job at risk. And if successful, let me understand this. You're telling me that I'll get to do this again all over in four years? Wow, thanks, but no thanks. And why again is getting the best candidate so important? Because from day one, the new city treasurer is responsible for the investment management of $400 million of taxpayer money. Most people watching tonight would be surprised to learn that when they vote for the city treasurer, they're voting for the individual who does the work.
If you can finish up, please.
This is a hands-on working position. It's not an administrative position where the treasurer has staff that does the investing, and then all the treasurer does is sign investment reports. I wish I had that job. Again, your city treasurer needs to be ready to do the job on day one. Now, by making the position an appointed position, job specs would be posted identifying the required levels of qualifications to measure the candidates. We now have introduced competition into the selection process, competing on job qualifications and skill sets rather than on vote-getting abilities.
Okay, Mr. Baruchy, your time is up.
Okay.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
I'd like to hear the rest of it, but he is our current treasurer.
He is our treasurer. If anybody has any questions for him after the speakers, he can come back up. Okay, let's bring up our current city clerk. And if at some point you could answer Mr. Milano's question about why you didn't put any banners below...
There were actually banners in Adams Square. As far as I know, that is, last time I checked, below Colorado.
Were you trying to disenfranchise our Armenian voters?
Absolutely not. We took great pains to reach out to all voters regardless of ethnicity, socioeconomic background, geographic location in the city, or other considerations.
I'm glad to hear his assertion was not accurate then. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor and council, not too long ago, in 2004 to be specific, Glendale's Charter Revision Committee carefully reviewed the entire charter founding document of our city. They met publicly, and many participated in those meetings. They looked at the charter closely, cleaning it up, updating it, and making revisions where they felt were necessary. During this process, they reviewed the idea of an appointed treasurer and city clerk, but in the end did not feel that was necessary to change the status of either of those very offices for very specific reasons. The late council member and Mayor Ginger Bremberg was one of the most ardent and vocal advocates of keeping these positions elected, and the people who served on the committee, with whom I have spoken, recall a unanimous consensus on this issue. It is all too simple to advocate for an appointed clerk and thus relegate the position to the bureaucratic depths of city hall, severing a vital link between the community and their government. And by making the position an appointed one, I have no doubt that over time, this may happen. But by ensuring a continued elected city clerk, we are ensuring the continuity of our democratic process, a process that relies on the active and informed participation of the electorate. As an elected city clerk, I must campaign on my record to keep serving the public. I have to ensure that we have an open and fair process that continues to keep the public engaged and participating in their local government. It is imperative that the city clerk answer directly to the electorate and separate it from the politics of the day. Has the job become more technical since its establishment? Yes, but so has every other position in government and in every other industry. Nowhere is there a requirement that a person must learn how to use email or computers before running for office, yet you all use it prolifically and have learned to do so to do your jobs. There are technical aspects of this position, but that can be learned. In deference to our friends over at JPL, I will be the first to concede and remind everyone that what we do is not rocket science. But this position is far more than just picking the person with the right, quote, "technical skills." This is about public trust. This is about who you trust to ensure the fair tabulation of our votes. This is about ensuring that the only person the clerk must answer to is the public. I strongly believe that the intent of the founders of our jewel city of having these positions elected has served us well for over a century and will continue to serve us well for another. My decision tonight reflect the will of the people we both serve. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. That's my last card. Take your comments from the council.
Yeah, I'll make my comments since I'm the one that has to be put on. Number one, I think this has been put on the ballot two times before in our history, and it was always clerk and treasurer together in one ballot measure. And I didn't suggest they be coupled together, because there's a lot more responsibility put on the city treasurer, who has to invest a half a billion dollars as compared to a city clerk. No offense, Arti, the treasurer's got a lot more responsibility with a half a billion dollars. So I really thought it's up to the public if they feel that you should have an appointed treasurer specifically. None of you around, not even Mr. Milano was here when we interviewed Mr. Baruchy. We interviewed a number of candidates, they stood right here, we had their resumes, it was all transparent in the open, and unanimously, we picked Mr. Baruchy to be the city treasurer. I think it was, I can't forget that at all, because it was such a beautiful way to do it. It was not a popularity contest. Mr. Mohill could run for city treasurer if he got enough votes, he'd be over there in the office investing a half a billion dollars a year, tax dollars, when he doesn't even know what a city treasurer does. Which Mr. Baruchy correctly said, he invests the money, he's the banker. He doesn't have responsibility on transferring water and power funds to the general fund. My gosh, what a stupid statement to make. You know, and I'm totally amazed to hear this is to consolidate power on the city council. No, we set the policy for the treasurer to invest. I don't know what policy we give to you, Arti.
A budget.
A budget, and that's it. There's a big difference. I would hope that the public would see fit to put the treasurer appointed, whether it's the city manager or the council. I can go either way, but Santa Monica does it, Long Beach, Anaheim, Santa Clarita, they all do it, and as we've heard, more cities across the state are appointing especially a city treasurer because of the complexity. Look at our country today. How do you want to measure a half a billion dollars and hope you're doing the right thing where, where the city actually holds their own? Even PERS today announced they only made 1.1% all last year, after they forecast 7.9%. I think Mr. Baruchy's done a better job in running our Treasury Department than the state has at PERS. So I'm kind of amazed at that. And then I'm just, I have nothing but contempt for Mr. Milano, who has written that I don't like Armenians, and I'm doing all this to keep the Armenians off of, off of these positions. That is so much BS. I wouldn't be sitting here today if I hadn't had Armenian support in getting this seat. That is an absolute fact. I have a lot of Armenian friends and Asian friends and Anglo-Saxon white friends, but to play that hand in here, the race card, on something like that, that I never remotely had in my mind when I suggested this, nothing but contempt for you, Mr. Milano. Find something else to write that you have facts on. Making up that crap, that's what Vanguardians does, insinuates things. I've had it for eight years now. Mr. Inajaran, you said you're having it now. I've had it for eight years from all of that crew. Sat there and castigated me and my family, and had my wife in tears. Yeah, eight years of it, and it's still going on. I'm sure Vanguard next week will have another featured article on me. They can't take it. Sorry, that's off the topic.
But a plan of nexus there, Mr. Weaver.
But I just think we ought to allow it to the voters, put it up there, put the arguments out on the ballot, and I wouldn't be surprised, it's half and half. City clerk is left just the way it is. But I'd be willing to bet the public, if they understood the reality of investing a half a billion dollars a year, what it means to this city, they might think it's best to have an extremely qualified person, such as Mr. Baruchy, doing it. Thank you.
Other comments? Comments?
Well, I'm not in favor of putting this for an election. I believe, just, and one thing comes to mind, and it's, and I hope that no one takes it personally, lunacy is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. This item has been settled by our community three times. I thought it was five, actually, but I see in the report that it says three times in all three times, this community has voted to have both treasurer and the city clerk as elected positions. Just as Mr. Weaver stated, some of, some of the cities that require that their city clerks or city treasurers be appointed, in the same token, there are many other cities that require their treasurers and city clerks, actually more treasurers than city clerks, to be elected. To me, it's an issue of, do we want, first, is there, I haven't, I've received one email on this, and before this item even was put on, on the agenda, most of the people I talked to, they did not even bring this issue up, whether it should be elected or appointed. And in the past, the discussions that I've had with individuals in the community who were adamant about keeping their voting rights for, including city attorney, actually, that they wanted to vote for the officers that represent them, and they wanted independent officers. I also would like to read the arguments against, against this suggestion, and it says, retain your right to vote unless you vote no. This is 1972, I guess. Our privilege of electing the city treasurer and the city clerk will cease our privilege. Elected officials are more responsive to the public than appointed officials and can be removed by voters. If you're afraid as an elected official to be removed by voters, you shouldn't be there in the first place. Elective government, a fundamental American, and I'm reading, this is not my words, is at stake, retain checks and balances. Now, you can vote to put any position up. I, I suggest that we have the Public Works and the Community Development Department be elected positions, just to be kind of sarcastic. But there are certainly, clearly, individuals that are department heads that run certain amount of operations for the city that should be under the city manager and should be directed. But the city treasurer and the city clerk should be representative. In my opinion, the city attorney as well should be representing the community, should be representing the people of this community. So I'm opposed to, there were, there's additional comments that I want to make, but I will stop right here and just, just emphasize the fact that we are talking about taking away... here and just emphasize the fact that we are talking about taking away voting rights from our constituencies. So, thank you.
Other comments? All right.
Well, I'm in favor of retaining the city clerk as an elected position. I do feel that there is a risk involved if there's a council appointment to be made in the elections. There may be some loyalty, at least the appearance of loyalty, and payback to those council members running for, would be reelection, by the city clerk. So I think it's important to do that. The city clerk also plays a more important role. He is oftentimes required and is responsive to the community, not just on the elections, but on everything from licensing to getting information out to important events that go on in the city. So he is responsive. His job requires him to be responsive to the members of the community. Having the election for the city clerk, I think, is appropriate. I don't share that belief, though, with the city treasurer. City treasurer should not be responsive to the members of the community. The members of the community should not be the ones dictating to him the highly technical and highly time-sensitive duties that the banker and the chief investment officer require. Would we envision a, Mr. Baruki saying, "I've been responsive to your needs"? No. He comes and says, "This is the 400 million that I'm in charge of, and I'm doing my best to make that money grow and to cut our losses and to make sure that we retain the appropriate liquidity and that we have the paychecks and the funds going out to the proper departments when needed." It should not be a popularity contest, and an election is, by definition, a popularity contest. Those who are most popular receive the most votes, you get elected. That should not be the case for our city treasurer. We should not have a popular individual in the community who knows nothing about investing or banking swept into office because he's popular for whatever reason. So I would support the appointment of a city treasurer. I think, you know, much of that argument holds analogy with the city attorney. His job is not to be popular or to represent the members of our community. His job is highly technical, highly legal. He's got to manage his office. He's got to determine claims. He's got to direct litigation and so forth. So it would be a mistake, I think, to have the city attorney position to be an elected position. And we see some of the other cities that have done that, and certainly, it's taken away some of the seriousness of that post. Pick a large city, and you have an elected city attorney, and you see some of the sideshows that go on with an elected city attorney. So my preference in this would be to let the voters of the city decide whether the city treasurer's position should be elected or appointed.
Mr. Quintero.
Okay, I'll start with the clerk. The clerk really has two functions, the office does. It's procedural and licensing, ministerial, those are the components of the city attorney, I mean, of the city clerk's office, and that's what they do pretty much 99% of the time throughout the years. However, every two years, they have a super, super important function, and that's the electoral process. And for that, I do feel more confident that an elected official would, I think, probably do a better job than someone that's appointed and eventually becomes part of the management team here at the city of Glendale. So in terms of the clerk, I don't think I'm interested in changing it. However, the treasurer is a different story. And let me say that the last elections were held 40 years ago. If it was in 1972, that was the last time this was brought up?
Yeah. Late 70s as well.
Yeah, all right, so the late 70s, roughly 40-plus years ago. And I personally feel that probably the voters took a look at clerk and treasurer and decided, no, we probably don't want to change it. However, I think they're going to feel different about the treasurer, because I think that is a highly technical position. The banker side of it perhaps is more ministerial. Once again, you're basically processing checks, et cetera, et cetera, not the investment end of it. The investment end of it is extremely technical, and I think for, if you want to have a reasonable return on your money, and especially in these economic times, the rates just keep going down and down every quarter, as you know. Mr. Baruki comes to us and tells us how much less we're making every quarter. And I think for that, you do need the degrees, you need the background in finance, and I think it would be quite easy, quite frankly, to appoint someone that has that type of capability, just by looking at their background, looking at the type of positions they've owned in the past, they've done in the past. And then in terms of, this is the most transparent, one of the most transparent positions in the city, it's quite easy to tell how this person is doing. All you have to do is look at the rate of return every quarter. So for that reason, I do think I would be interested. The voters are going to decide, but I would be interested in putting it on the ballot. I think it should happen at our next citywide general election, so there's not much of a cost, and let the voters decide what it is that they would like to do with the treasurer's position.
May I make an additional comment?
Yeah.
I just want to read what the charter says regarding, there's been a lot of talk about the investment officer. The charter provides that the city treasurer shall receive and safely keep and pay out as directed. In this charter, all money is belonging to the city, and all money is received by or coming into the hands of any officer, board, department, or employee of the city, and shall keep an exact account of receipts and disbursements, period. Doesn't say that the city treasurer is the investment officer. The investment function of the city rests with the city council, and the city council allocates to the treasurer the investment function of the city. If the city council feels that the treasurer is not doing what he, what is by council policy what he should be doing, then they can take that function away from him. So the investment officer of the city is not the city treasurer, it's actually the city council.
May I just add one thing, too? I asked for these to be put on separately, because all I was trying to do was get them onto a ballot, one or the other, especially the treasurer, let the public decide. Now, as I've heard, as far as the city clerk, it's a different animal. So if it comes down that it's only the city treasurer, I think that is the important one, and I think if it is, it should be the city council doing it, because that's what we did with Ron Baruki. Right at the podium, we had all the resumes. You can't get any more transparent than that. You leave it to the city manager, and he'll meet and make a decision out of public view. So for the most part, I think it should be the city council doing it, an open session. Thank you.
By the way, maybe Mr. Baruki knows the answer. After the fiasco down in Orange County, did the state pass laws in terms of what could be invested by municipalities and county government?
They tightened reporting requirements is what they required out of local government. You notice that we now have to generate, or what they decided on, basically, you had to come out with a quarterly report and present that to council or to the people, and then an annual report that has to be also presented, and an annual review of the investment policy.
But not necessarily the policy itself in terms of the investments?
No, not that I'm aware of. There were a lot of cities, particularly larger cities, pulled back on their investments, and basically, if you will, fell back. They simply fell back. A big concern, like the city of Glendale, for example, the previous treasurer was very concerned about repurchase agreements and reverse repurchase agreements, feeling that that was the downfall of Orange County, and struck that out of our investment policies, saying that we just will not do that. So it is labeled, and we just don't touch repurchase agreements and reverse repurchase agreements.
Okay.
I'd just like to make a statement, a disclosure, in terms of transparency and open government, that I have not run for the position of treasurer or city clerk in the past, and I do not intend to run for the position of treasurer or city clerk in the future. However, I think Artie's got a pretty good job. I just want to go on the record for that.
Let me make my comments. I think it's been a very interesting discussion, a good discussion to have. Certainly, there's pros and cons on both sides, as you can tell by the distribution of how it's done across the state. It seems like more cities have appointed people for both of these positions than not. I would argue that I don't think that democracy has been threatened in the cities that have appointed city clerks or city treasurers. I've never heard anyone make that argument, that they're less democratic. That said, I have no problem with the city clerk being elected. I think that there's definitely advantages that Artie pointed out that make a lot of sense. Just because I like a good debate, I will, though, take issue with his, I think assertion that I heard, that being elected somehow makes you less political than if you're appointed. I would say that quite the opposite is true, that if you're an elected official of any sort, you're by nature political. And I think that if the position was appointed, it would be less political and not more. But be that as it may, I really don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, and I'm fine with going with the majority about not putting the city clerk question on the ballot. However, I do favor putting the city treasurer question on the ballot. Mr. Manukian made a point where he said, "Well, why don't we elect the Public Works Director or Director of Community Services?" And to me, the answer is because those are highly technical positions that require a certain learning set and skill set that is not always going to be reflected in a general election. And I would say that the same is true with the city treasurer. And as Mr. Baruki said, it's very hard to argue qualifications in a general election, and we don't have any criteria, so somebody could run for that position who has absolutely no criteria. And if for whatever reason they're popular in the community, or they're a good speaker, or they're good-looking, they could get elected, and then I think we're in big trouble. And that's not to say anything about any past candidates that may or may not have run. I just think that, looking forward, what makes best policy for the city, what would make me most comfortable, would be for that position to be appointed, whether it's city manager or us. I think that's kind of beyond the point, you know, it doesn't really matter to me very much. But I think it's something the people should decide. So I, my preference would be to put it on the ballot, have the pros and cons. And as was pointed out, the question's never been answered, just in terms of the city treasurer. It's been answered combined with the city clerk and city treasurer, and I think the answer from the people might be very different if it was just city treasurer. So let me ask if staff has enough direction at this point?
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one question. I understand that council is interested, if we go forward with this, of doing it during the next municipal election, because it saves money.
Cheap one, yeah.
But my concern is that that's also the election time for city treasurer. So are we, isn't it this next year? Next April? So I don't think it's fair for somebody, for candidates to run, not knowing whether or not there'll be a job, considering how expensive it is to run for office. So I'd like what the financial implications would be of having just the one question, if that changes the price for having it during the national election?
No, it wouldn't, because the cost is, sorry, yeah, the cost is associated with this consolidating with the county.
You can't negotiate half price because it's...
No, I mean, we'll try, obviously, negotiate, but yeah, it's not, it's based on whatever our provided share of is.
Well, then what do we do about the question of having people run for that office potentially, and then there not being an office for them to fill? How would that work?
Well, there's a couple of ways to handle that, Madam Mayor. One is to set a timing that's different than, of the position converting to an appointed position, different than April 2013, or you just put both on the ballot, and if that position doesn't exist, there is, there will still be an election, but if the position is eliminated as an elected position, it would, the charter provision could be written in such a way to make it clear that it would take effect upon the certification of election results in April 2013, and your point is well taken, though, you would have that issue of having a campaign for a position that may not exist at that time. So we'd be happy to look into that a little bit more, because we do have time, either between now and the November election, or between now and the April election, to kind of figure out what's the best strategy, deal with that. However, we also take council direction as far as choosing a different election time, either in November. I do have to note, and I was talking with my staff this morning about, the statewide primary election, which is in June, given that that's about less than six months away, we'd have to adopt a resolution within 88 days, so that's probably a couple of months. And even with that, there's a possibility that the county would have the discretion to say, "No, we're not going to add that to that election," only because they may have a full ballot, and they're trying to run everything. Just given the timing of it, it may not be able to happen for the statewide primary election, which is in June, but feel much better about, obviously, the primary, the general election in November, and of course, the April election, so.
Well, my feeling is that spending six figures on this is out of the question, but I just do have that concern about people running for an office that might not exist, but, you know, that's not enough for me to be in favor of spending a lot more money just to have it a few months earlier.
I think the clerk has a point to it.
Yeah. Go on up.
Madam Mayor and Council, there is a recent example to follow with the proposed secession of the Valley of Los Angeles, where individuals ran for offices that technically did not exist. I know it's a little bit of, it was pending the secession of the Valley. It was the reverse of this, where we have a position that exists, but a law that, if passed by the voters, would supersede that. And in the event, if the proposal given to the voters fails, I would urge you to have candidates that have run for the position, because you would want to have a treasurer.
Okay. So there's a precedent, this has been done before. So is that enough guidance?
Well, I would like just a motion. Obviously, the motion would be to place the city treasurer position on the ballot. Just would need direction on, I'm assuming it was, have that position appointed by the city council, but, yeah, the city council or city manager.
City council.
And then whether to make that an at-will position or as part of the classified service. This is just stuff that we would need the information on to put into proposed ballot language when we bring it back to you.
But we could still talk about and decide whether the council appoints, the city manager appoints, or whether it's at-will or part of the civil service.
Right, you can give me direction on that now, or when we bring it back to you, you can?
I think we better, for myself, I'm not ready to make that decision.
For me, I was sitting there when I voted for Ron, and it was very nice to have the candidates here. We had all their resumes, so totally transparent, anybody could come in and watch or listen to us, so I thought that was a real good way to go.
Najarian?
I would request that it come back with some of the implications of the at-will versus the civil service. I think, I mean, my thought is that an at-will would be able to be removed much more quickly than a civil service that would have due process for the job retention, but if you, I'd like to see that in a report, just to confirm my understanding.
If we did, the council would be just like the airport authority, or we'd do it here in public.
Then, given that the council wants a little more follow-up on that, I'd say I would just bring back a report focusing on the treasurer position, and then focusing on those subsequent questions at a subsequent meeting, probably in the very near future, so that then you could decide whether or not you want to go to the November election or the April election, although it's sounding like more towards April.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Manukian?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Thank you. Next item?
At 9A is Director of Community Development regarding standards pertaining to non-conforming accessory ground signs in Chapter 2.3, 20.33 of Title 30 of the GMC. At 9A1 is ordinance for introduction, alternative 1. At 9A2 is ordinance for introduction, alternative 2.
Thank you. Mr. Hargani.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you might remember that this ordinance was part of a discussion you had in the past, and you approved a number of zoning... part of a discussion you had in the past, and you approved a number of zoning code amendments except for this item, because you asked for staff to provide more information, contact more property owners, and provide photographs of the proposed signs. The signs, in layman terms, we call them pole signs. This is what has been discussed in the past. The code allowed them, then at some point, the code allowed, did not allow new ones, but allowed to change the faces of such signs. And at some point, there was another code amendment that then disallowed and gave an amortization period for those signs to be removed. So the council wanted to look at some options. What you have in front of you, in addition to the photographs and the materials that you asked us to survey, are three options. Essentially, the proposed option is what has been proposed by the planning commission to retain the existing, the status quo, which would then result in the staff having to move forward to ask the property owners to remove the existing pole signs. Alternative 1, which staff has provided for you, would allow the property owners to maintain the existing pole signs, but would not allow new pole signs. But the existing pole signs would be allowed to be, to have their faces changed if the businesses changed, and that would, there would be no amortization period, there would be no end period forever, as long as those pole signs are maintained and repaired. The new owners could change the face with the new business owners. Alternative 2 would also allow the same thing, except only for the next five years, and there would be an end period for that. Staff would recommend that if you would like to allow the property owners to change the faces of the signs, to put no time limit on that, however, to just say that forever they could change the faces of the signs, but maintain the status quo of not allowing any new pole signs as such. With that, if you have any questions, Mr. Kraus is here to answer your technical questions.
Okay. And I do have cards, and just to let the public know, we have discussed this quite a bit in the past.
Just had a question, Mr. Agani. If we said the five years, at the end of five years, it'd be coming back to the council, right?
Would be, well, at the end of the five years, unless you directed us to come back to council, we would, at the end of the five years, proceed with code enforcement.
Oh, just like...
Unless you asked us to come back in five years.
Just like Astroturf. You put the intent years ago, and you're gonna...
And that is why we would ask you to decide one way or another.
Unless we put five years with needing to come back, or council review and acceptance. So what's the negative to that?
There's no negative, other than, well, the only negative is that you would be in the same place in five years. So the same discussion would come back.
No, in terms of anybody improving their signage, changing it out, they would have to assume the risk that in five years, the council sitting here would extend it again.
They could assume that, or they could, they would not know for sure.
That'd be, that'd be the inherent risk they would assume.
Yes.
And the planning commission's original recommendation was neither of these alternatives, correct?
Correct.
It was to just have the signs removed now?
Right.
Which was required by, to clarify. Let me go to the public, unless there's any other questions at this point.
Well, I, what prompted this issue of these signs? I mean, why are we going after these signs at this point?
Because, in fact...
And I know we had a discussion on it before, but...
The existing code actually amortizes them, and this would be the time that we would proceed with code enforcement, to ask them to remove them. However, there was, we understood that there was some sentiment among some of the owners of these properties, or the owners of these businesses, to maintain them, especially in the face of the current economy.
Just to be clear, there were at one time hundreds of these signs. The code came to prohibit them, and all of those owners removed the signs, and a few people didn't, and I guess you could say they got away with it, and now they want to continue to get away with it. Okay, let me go to the public. Lucy Casparian, be followed by Judy Kendall.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. I'd like to start off by telling everyone a little bit about myself and my background, and how it ties into why I'm here today. In 2007, I started my own law firm. It was only a short blocks from here that I leased my space at 136 North Glendale Boulevard. At that time, it was a two-story building. I was allowed to get a permit for a sign about 20 feet long. It was simple. It had my name on it, my business name, California Lemon Law Center, and my phone number. It resulted in my business growing from just myself to five people and two part-time staff within a year. My business grew so much where I said, "Hey, why not buy my own building instead of paying rent to somebody else?" So I purchased the building at 535 West Glen Oaks Boulevard. One of the most attractive aspects of that building was a large monument sign. I was under the impression at the time when I purchased it, that I could just easily change the placard on the sign representing my building, representing my business name and phone number. Excuse me. So I purchased the building, I went to obtain a permit, and I was told, "You can't obtain a permit any longer for those type of signs." I was specifically told that I had to remove the current placard on there, or else I would be fined. But they also said that the decision was in the process of being reviewed. This is approximately two years ago. Within 10 months, I received a notice that I was being fined because that there was no sign up, that the placards had been removed. I actually got happy when I received the fine notice. I contacted the investigator, or the inspector who had fined me, and said, "Hey, I'm more than willing to pay your fine. I'll pay you twice the fine amount if you'll give me the permit." And he said, "Well, why are you saying that?" So I explained to him the process, what I'd gone through, which is, I'd gone there to apply for a permit. I was told that I couldn't get a permit because those type of permits weren't permitted anymore. He said, "Well, let me talk to whoever the powers that be, and I'll get back to you." I was then told to ignore it, the permit, the fine, and this decision was going to be up for a vote, and we would revisit it within the next few months. I then received another notice for another fine a couple of months later, and said, "Hey, did things change? Can I get a permit now?" And they said, "No." Well, I'd like to also add that, we, earlier in the Los Angeles Times, I was reading how the city council was trying to revamp Brand Boulevard and help the auto manufacturers, auto dealerships, and bringing more business in. My staff dwindled down from five to, five to three full-time and two part-time, because I'm not getting the walk-in traffic, I walk-in traffic that I was before. My sign, my name says it all. My business is the California Lemon Law Center. My business is 100% dealing with helping consumers with the lemon law.
You're gonna have to finish up.
Well, Mr. Quintero was quoted in the Los Angeles Times in saying, "We've got to do everything to help the auto manufacturers, auto dealerships, and bringing business in." What I'd asked is for that same opportunity to be afforded to me?
Okay, thank you.
That I can bring my business in as well. Thank you.
Judy Kendall's my last card.
Mayor Friedman, members of the council, for the record, my name is Judy Kendall. Signage is an important business element, especially for retail and service-oriented businesses. For the benefit of businesses and the city at large, all signage should be kept well-maintained. However, no existing legal nonconforming signage should be required to be reduced in size or height due to changes in city requirements which were not brought about by the property owner. Voluntary compliance should be encouraged as it becomes economically practical, and city staff should be receptive to such voluntary requests as they occur. Illegal nonconforming signs are another issue. If a current property owner owned the property when the sign was illegally installed or modified, then there should be a mechanism to pay a fine and correct the violation. And this would be in the instance when a sign face was replaced, or other permit-requiring work was done without a permit, or to conform entirely in the event the sign structure was knowingly installed without a permit. Alternative 1 is reasonable, is reasonable for illegal nonconforming sign, as long as it does not prohibit the normal maintenance and repair required to keep the sign in good appearance, and as long as staff is given some authority to reduce some of the current sign requirements when voluntary compliance is either physically or economically impractical. Compliance could require a loss of parking for landscaping, and the cost to small businesses could be in the thousands of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. That's my last card. I'll go to the council for comments.
May I just correct, add one more piece to what the statement I made? There are a number of signs that were actually obtained through variances. Those would not be illegal, and they would be able to maintain them.
And I'm assuming that any of the owners of these nonconforming signs could also apply for a variance?
That's correct.
Which isn't to say they would necessarily get it, but they could apply.
That's also correct.
Mr. Quintero?
Okay, so it's my understanding there's approximately 59 of these nonconforming signs, and they've all existed for at least 25 years, right?
Yes, I'm going to ask Mr. Kraus to come out.
Staff report.
Yes, Mayor Friedman, council, Councilman Quintero. Yes, the, there's only two signs in the DSP East Broadway that were more recently made nonconforming. Those are just a block away.
7-Eleven?
7-Eleven, although I think that one's been there that long, too. But all the others would have been made nonconforming in 1986, so that was 25 years ago. So these signs are all at least that old, and probably a lot older than that.
Okay, yeah. All right, so for me, it's time. When you look at the pictures, we just don't need this type of structure in our community. And by the way, they are also competing with companies, retail, and other type of businesses that don't have these kind of signs. So in a sense, maybe you call it an unfair advantage, although I'm not sure you're persuaded looking at a sign to, you know, pull in. I counted 13 signs from 7-Eleven, McDonald, Jack in the Box, Del Taco, et cetera. So I'm convinced the best thing to do is go ahead and go with the staff recommendation. Is that alternative 1, or?
No, that would be 2. 1 would allow them to continue indefinitely.
Yeah, all right, so 2.
Actually, that would be doing nothing, so the code would stand as it is.
Oh, with alternative 1?
No, no, that would be just, doing nothing would be removal.
Right. Well, you know what? That's what I want to do. I mean, I just don't see another five years, you know, they'll be back in five years. I mean, it's just time. This is a urban city. We're not along a freeway where people pull over when they see a big sign three or four miles away, and so I'm ready to call an end to it.
Mr. Quintero?
I don't agree with my colleague. You know, we keep, we continually keep doing things in this city that are not beneficial to the existing businesses. We've raised fees left and right, we're raising utility fees, we're raising fees on electricity, and now I understand that the time has run out on some of these signs, but now we're going to cause these businesses to incur additional expenses, to remove these signs and put additional signs that separates their establishments from others. And imposing that type of expenditures on our current businesses, I just don't agree with, especially during economically difficult times, where we had an individual who came up and said, "Our staff has been reused." And we, as a city, we have reduced staff as well, taking into consideration what we're going through in terms of redevelopment and budget cuts. Having been through in the private industry on some of these cuts, and understanding what it takes to market your business, and having an edge over your competitors, I just don't see what is the value to the city, maybe aesthetics. In my opinion, it's not even aesthetics. It's personal preference at this point. And just causing grief to these businesses in the current environment is just not the right policy, in my opinion. I also have a question in terms of, I see a sign that says Church of Christ. Now, can we, as a council, impose these rules on a property that is controlled by a religious group?
Councilmember Mnuchin, as long the rules are, as long as the rules are applied equally and on their face to the same establishment, whether religious or nonreligious, the answer is yes.
I remember a number of years ago when St. Mary's Church was purchased, and I was not on council back then, back in the mid-'90s, there was outcry that the church was going to put an ethnic Armenian cross on its, on the front of the building. And there was a big hearing in this very same room where individuals came and said, "It's a historic building. You can't put a cross on that." But eventually, cooler heads prevailed, where the expression of religious identity was, and the separation of church and state, were deemed to be above and beyond the laws of the city. Would that apply in this case as well?
I don't have a picture of the sign, but if the particular sign at issue is...
Just a pole sign that says...
If the particular, in the case, the example you just gave, where the particular sign or symbol is essential, crucial to that particular religion's teachings, there are provisions of a federal law which may trump local zoning. But in that case, probably not.
Okay. I'm certain I can find attorneys who will argue that point with you, but be that as it may, that's just one sign. I just think imposing these financial hardships on our local businesses is not the right thing to do at this point. I think we should be helping our businesses, like we helped our car dealerships. And I know our car dealerships went through very difficult time. The new ones that they built with some of the signs that they had, they tried to build in front of their facilities back before 2007, if I'm not mistaken. But imposing these things on our businesses is not the right policy, and I disagree with it. And if, what is it, option 1, that allows them to keep it until voluntarily they're removed, or if they come down, take them down, not allow new ones, then that's fine. And have them voluntarily change, that's fine. I think that's the way that I would go. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, I just have the opinion that at this time, and with the economy of the country the way this is, there's too many businesses being hurt. Any little advantage they can get, they need. And if they're using it now to take it away from, isn't going to be positive, it's going to hurt those businesses to some degree. That's my own gut feeling on it. I'd like to see them all gone, but I'm not going to let code enforcement go out and do that today like they're going to do on the Astroturf, where it's going to cost those homeowners thousands of dollars. And I want to bring that back to discuss, too. But if I want them removed, but I don't want them removed today, it leaves me at option 2, where, okay, you've got the five years, but staff has got to do more to be out with those groups and say, "Look, you've got the five years, but let us work with you, trying to figure out some kind of design that will work within the code, but allow you to eliminate it. You can budget for it, you can save up the money, you've got five years to do it." Does that make any sense, Mr. Agani?
So if the council directed us to allow five years for those signs to remain, in the meantime, immediately contact those property owners to plan for the removal and replacement with legally conforming signs, staff would follow that direction, if that was the direction of council?
I think, you just don't tell them they've got five years and walk away. If they're, you're telling them, "Got five years," I think staff has got to make some kind of concerted effort during that period to educate them to what will work, let them budget for it, and hopefully have it done in the five years. Hopefully, our economy will have turned around to the point where they can survive without those signs, which I'd like to see gone. But now you've got three different views. Two left.
Senator...
How many views? Three?
One, two, three.
Hey...
You've only heard two so far.
Here comes the fourth one.
Frank wants to cut them all out. He wants to keep them all, and I'm in between.
It is, it is a matter of aesthetics, and I find these signs, at least the ones depicted in my packet and the ones that I've seen personally, I do not find them to be attractive. I find them to be very distracting from the quality of the community that we're trying to build, we're continuing to build. These signs are something you see in East LA, willy-nilly, you know... These signs are something you see in East L.A., willy-nilly, cleaners, and donuts, and fried chicken, and liquor store, very unattractive, no conformity. So my, my first reaction is to get rid of them immediately. However, I have a little bit of compassion, and I'm willing to let them remain and have them removed in two years. I think the five-year period is too long. Two years should be enough time to wind up whatever they're planning on doing, make other accommodations for other signage, legal signage, or to apply for a variance, if that's what they so choose to do. But I think, I think we've got to wind this down and clean up the city.
Want to divide it by two and say, "Two and a half years"? No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
I think five years is too long. I think we're going to forget, I think this council is going to forget about the input and the reports and the sentiment that we've...
I'll go with you.
...that we've received, so.
I'll go along with two years also.
Well, I'll make my comments. I think Mr. Manukian hit it on the head where he said it's about competitive advantage. It's about competitive advantage for fifty-some-odd businesses that shirked the rules that everybody else abided by, by changing out signs to make them illegal and not getting sign permits, because they knew they had that competitive advantage. I don't think it's fair to the companies that did remove the signs, and there were hundreds of these signs at one point, and those businesses followed the code and they took them down when they became nonconforming. And, you know, it's kind of like when people have illegal conditions on their houses and they want to keep them even though other people, you know, or people who, let's say, build without a permit, build, you know, a huge part of their house without permit and say, you know, "Well, why can't I just keep it? It's there." And meanwhile, other people go through the design review process and get their additions turned down. Well, who then is, who is that being unfair to? I think it's being unfair to the people who follow the rules. I also do have sympathy, and by the way, I have friends who own businesses with some of these signs, so, you know, this is not an easy decision for me, but to me, it's one of basic fairness. I agree that most of these signs are, I think if you look at the pictures, are not what we want in our community, and more importantly, the other people remove their signs. What are you going to tell them? "Hey, if you wait long enough in the city of Glendale, you just wait long enough, the rules won't apply to you"? I don't think that's right either. I think it's a bad precedent to set. I would go along with the two-year plan, because I think it does give people time to, to plan and hopefully time for the economy to recover to where they can actually do this. It doesn't affect the exist, Hassan, this doesn't affect the existing legal nonconforming, correct?
The legal nonconforming can, can stay if the businesses can, do not change and the same names stay.
Right, so, you know, let's be clear that this affects people who change their signs illegally, or who, and, you know, in the case of the lady who came, and, you know, "I feel sorry for you, bought a property that had an illegal sign and didn't do the due diligence to know that the sign was illegal and kind of got stuck." We have the same thing happen sometimes with single-family residences, people buy a property, they don't know that the second floor was never permitted, you know, what do you do? So I think the two-year plan makes sense. I also just want to be sure that we are careful, and I know that you're sensitive to this, about monument signs that might be place-setting or historic. I hate to see the diners' chicken sign, you know, all of a sudden be torn down. So I think that your department is sensitive to that and kind of knows the difference.
So the mortuary has a competitive advantage, is somebody on the die set, people are dying to get in there, the mortuary. That was lost on you? Okay, let's, we'll forget the little joke.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move.
I'll introduce one of the ordinances.
Oh, introduce, is that two, or two is modified?
Well, it would be modified version of two.
Modified version of two, to change it to March one, two thousand and fourteen.
I'll introduce that ordinance, but what direction to staff that you will get with the landowners, whoever owns those signs over the next two years, help them do it so we don't have to go through this in two years? That make sense?
Yes, Mr. Agani.
Madam, just Mr. Kraus wants complete clarity, and I asked him to come in and get his complete clarity so that we will not misstep anything.
Why don't you, why don't you tell us what you think you heard?
Okay. This option two was based on the concept that Mr. Weaver, Councilman Weaver, was trying to present. So what, right now, the way the code is, I can indefinitely maintain, provided they're in good condition, all of these signs that you have pictures for, if they were all done legally and if the faces were changed when they were allowed to be changed. That can go on forever. There's no amortization under the present law for these signs. However, you can't modify them, which includes face changes. That's the current law, that's been the law with regard to these signs, except for the two in the DSP zone, for eleven years. We do allow ground signs in C-one and C-two and DSP East Broadway, but they're just smaller and lower. What this, what this, this will not affect those, this, this option two, regardless whether it's five years or two years, will not affect the ability of people to maintain those legal nonconforming signs.
Just a quick question, the, the fifty photos that are in our book, are any of those legal nonconforming, or those all?
Most of them are legal nonconforming. Some of them used to be legal nonconforming until they were changed illegally, without a sign permit. There's some...
How many then are we talking about that will actually, under this, under this alternative, how many of them would fall under?
Well, they'll all fall under it, because I think that's what we assumed you would...
I mean, how many will have to be removed in two years? No?
Well, anybody that wants to make the change, any of these signs will be...
I understand, but how many of them right now?
Right now.
Are illegal, nonconforming? Do you have any idea?
I don't, we don't have a comprehensive list. I know in doing the survey, that there's at least four or five of them, and if I had to guess, there's probably another half a dozen.
Well, I guess now, that's a different story. My question then is, the Jack-in-the-Box sign, the Del Taco sign, et cetera, et cetera, you mean they're just going to get to stay indefinitely?
That's the current law, so unless they propose to change...
I won't go to that, because that, by the way, these are long-term leases, that Seven-Eleven has been there for God knows how long, it's going to continue to be there. It's not fair to have them stay with their signs, and yet, the little mom-and-pop strip mall is going to have to change their sign.
Let me make a suggestion, that we pass this, but we bring that, agendize that as a separate discussion, if, if, whether there's a way of dealing with those legal nonconforming signs. Because I think the throw the baby out with the bathwater doesn't help us either.
Well, is there going to be a way to?
Sure, there is a way, it's called amortization. We did it in nineteen seventy-four, modified in seventy-nine, where we had, well, no, modified in seventy-five or seventy-six, to have a ten-year amortization period, and we got rid of thousands of signs between eighty-four and eighty-six. However, the state, in their infinite wisdom, changed some rules regarding that. So if we were attempting to do that today, it would be a lot more intensive. We would have to do a survey, this is one of the reasons we didn't recommend an amortization provision for these signs, we'd have to do a survey of all the illegal signs in the whole city to follow the state law. It's rather convoluted and sort of is beside the point, but anyway, that's the state law. So we're not, in terms of the Community Development Department, we're not enthusiastic about having an amortization provision, even though it's perfectly legal, because of the complexity of, of trying to do that.
What did you hear from us? What did you, what did you hear from us? I'm trying to understand. What, or what didn't you?
What we heard was that those, the signs that have lost their legal nonconforming status would be removed within two years by the date that's set.
And that's maybe, sounds like about five signs.
That's about half a dozen signs, yes.
Or anybody that wanted to change the face in the next few months, or in the next two years.
The discussion that's ensuing is that, how about the rest of the signs that would not fall in that category, and Mr. Kraus is explaining the onerous process that the state is, has put in front of us in order to come up with an amortization process, which would require us to basically make a, a survey of every potentially illegally erected sign in order to get to, say, forty signs.
Not just these signs, but the whole city, all the existing illegal ones in the whole city, not these signs, or anything related to these signs. Again, it, it obviously seems to me to be an attempt by the state to discourage local communities from doing this.
Yeah, well, it was the intent by the corporations that run these corners and lobbyists of the advertising of the sign, and I'm sure they succeeded.
They did.
It made it much more difficult to...
That happened in the, I think in the eighties sometime, so, I think that was one of the reasons we didn't pursue amortization in eighty-six, besides which we just finished, like I said, amortizing thousands of signs throughout the city.
So if, if this is the desire of the council, we'll go with alternative two, but to change the date with two years, and if also it's a direction of the council to bring back another discussion to look at the possibilities of amortization and the obstacles thereof, and so you can have that discussion separately, we could do so.
All of this for six signs, is this, is this what it's coming down? Is that it? Is that what we're doing?
It's six signs in the moment, but it could be more as, please don't speak in the, in the gallery, please. It's six signs in the moment, but as businesses change, it'll be more over time.
Yeah.
So if you, if you provide a two-year period, the longer people wait to get their permit to change the face, the less time they'll have to keep that face, so the less likely that they will actually do that.
So, let me get this straight, you were mentioning McDonald's and some, they're not, they're not going to be subject to this, so the big companies are going to keep what they have?
No, they're subject to this, but whether you're a large or small, if you have a legal nonconforming, one of these signs...
But are you going to be able to have McDonald's change their sign, or Burger King?
No, if they change...
From a McDonald's to a Burger King, yeah.
Or if they change the design of the sign, then they're, they're subject to this, too.
Just one example, we know, we've had an issue, we had an issue in the past with Jack-in-the-Box, because as you may remember, they changed their trademark a number of years ago, and that was one business that may want to change their sign face because of this, because we, we essentially made them keep the, the old sign face on one sign on the side.
Yeah, they, right, they asked, they asked one of our planners if they could change the sign face, and we said, "No."
And so hopefully, what would happen is they would change it, but they would make it into a legal sign.
It could into...
That would abide by our code. That's the whole purpose of doing this.
But this will do for you, just allow you to set the, the edge of the envelope, and so as those businesses, especially larger corporations, you wouldn't expect it to happen very often, if at all, unless they were doing a rebranding effort, some of those signs could end up standing there in perpetuity. The, but the others, at least with this action here tonight, it gives the council the opportunity to say, "If you do change it, thou shalt play by the new rules."
Not even new rules, they're thirty-year-old rules.
Well, and the existing rules, basically, but they have to come into compliance with that, which you have already approved. It, it's not a, a perfect solution, there's no two ways about it. The, the uniform and complete solution would be to go through the survey process, to do a full and complete amortization. That can be done, but it is a more arduous process.
Bring it back to us.
Well, have you gotten the answer that you're looking for?
So, Councilman Weaver introduced option two with a two-year period, so that would be twenty fifteen?
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen, right.
Right.
And so, then that will come back next week for a vote, then?
So that would actually affect six signs at this point?
Approximately.
That we know about.
Six that we know about, yes.
Ballpark, yeah.
And what is the fee if these people wanted to apply for a variance? What is the fee for a variance?
Chris, do you remember?
It's approximately three thousand dollars for the application process.
Only, okay. Plus they have to hire consultants to present their case properly, and how would, how, how much would those run? Does anybody?
Well, we don't know what the consultants charge. Let me explain something about, the variance process is really meant to be an exception to the code, to the rules. Therefore, in zoning practice, it's, it's supposed to be something really physically different about the property that, that would warrant giving an exception.
So, in your opinion, would these signs qualify for a variance if they apply?
I cannot opine on that, I could say some might, some might not, but I, I don't know.
Under what circumstances?
Certainly, you, basically, when you do a variance process, you, you analyze the application to see if the property in question is at a disadvantage because of some physical constraint.
There are four findings you have to make for a variance.
Right, but the...
Exceptional circumstances, what is, what is the first one?
Hardship.
Hardship.
hardship. So, they would have to make all those four findings.
Right, all four.
And, and to be, I know you're trying to be polite and all of that, but in my opinion, none of those signs are going to really qualify for any variance. So what I want to say to all those six property owners who are going to be stuck with this, don't apply for a variance, because you're not going to get it. You're going to have to take your sign down and suffer the consequences, so, that's it. That's pretty much.
It's been introduced.
And just, right now, we have the current code, I mean, without either option A or B, those signs are, are not allowed. If, if the council so chooses, we would have to return to you next week with what I, whatever of those two options or neither that you want. If you like, we can come back to you at your next meeting with the actual survey process. When you approve that which you have right now, the council made a conscious decision not to include an amortization, including that survey process. So it was either, we're going to go with it, or we're not, and, and then we threw in this, this five-year element of flexibility to give us some timeframe. But truly, it's either we're going to move in this direction, or we're not going to move in this direction, or be faced with always having these signs up there in some way, shape, or form, because some of these larger companies and corporations, they might not ever change out, and you will always have that, that, the golden arches looking at you saying, you know, "We didn't have to change." So I would just, as we look for clarity, you know, from the council, is it the council's direction that we move towards eliminating all of these pole signs?
Senator.
And that's what makes it so interesting, because I do a lot of driving in Southern California, including down to Orange County and San Diego and so forth, and it's so interesting, you go to some communities where they are not allowed, and in fact, you have a McDonald's with a little sign, very tasteful, you see the mountains in the background, et cetera. So why do we, everyone else is compliant, why do we need to allow fifty-nine property owners to continue to do business as usual? I just don't, I, I don't see it. I don't see it, not just the large corporations, but even the individual strip malls. You'll drive down Glen Oaks Boulevard, you'll see a strip mall that looks kind of nice and so forth, and on the next block, all of a sudden, there's this garage. Pacific Avenue, the same way, when you get off of Pacific at the one-thirty-four, you've got Acapulco, you've got Jack-in-the-Box, then you've got a Starbucks without any signage, or very little. So it's just so unfair, as far as I'm concerned.
Senator, I thought the majority of us says we want to move in that direction to get rid of them all. And is this step one?
But you can't, that's, that's the point.
Now, step, step one...
I'll, I'll support it if you can get rid of all of them.
I, I think we have the...
That's the point.
I, I believe we have the direction to come up with alternative two with a two-year, two-year process, and I believe there's more discussion about what happens to the remaining nonconforming signs, and if you'd like, we could come up with a staff report later on to discuss the ramifications of dealing with non, existing non, legal nonconforming signs, and the options that we can provide for you, and then the, the obstacles that might exist.
That's fine, because we don't have enough information.
That's right. I believe that would be a separate discussion that we could provide.
Is that okay with everyone?
We're going the right direction.
So we'll agendize that to a future date. Okay. Thank you. Okay, next item.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited, time is not part of this agenda, each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
Thank you. First card is Richard Aspiritu, to be followed by Mike Mohill. If you wish to speak, this is a time to turn in your cards. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Once again, I am Richard Aspiritu. I want to publicly make an announcement today that I have no intention of running for the next election here in the city of Glendale. However, I will become a political animal, and I want to say something to the candidates of the incumbents who will be running. Back in the seventies, a lot of veterans came home from Vietnam to attune "A Time For All Seasons." We came home to that song, and I want to give you three of those lines from that song. "A time to plant, and a time to uproot; a time to search, and a time to give up; a time to keep, and a time to throw away." That song came from Ecclesiastic, Chapter Three, and I hope the incumbents take that to heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Mohill, to be followed by Herbert Milano. Mike Mohill to be followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, council members, and the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill, long-term resident of Glendale. For the past couple of weeks, city watchdogs from far north Glendale came before this council and accused another high-profile city watchdog of high crimes and misdemeanors with the help of Councilman Aron Najarian. Regardless of whether this individual was guilty or innocent, I don't know. These individuals used newspaper articles of some 25 years ago as their weapon of attack. This is the same group of individuals who have said the Glendale news press wasn't worth the paper it was printed on, unless the paper wrote favorable material with regard to their causes or political candidates. My question tonight is not about city watchdogs, nope, who are not elected to council, but are elected officials who sit before me on Tuesday nights and pass judgment on others. Are our elected city council members Frank Quintero, Aron Najarian, and Mayor Laura Freeman still under federal investigation and local investigation for their receiving thousands of dollars in campaign contributions in 2009? Monies they received from Advanced Development and Investment, ADI, and their subsidiaries. Afterwards, they approved millions of dollars for their products, for their projects. Some people would say ADI was in the business of influence peddling. Others would call this high-stakes, pay-to-play politics. Councilmembers Najarian, Quintero, and Mayor Friedman, the public would like to know if you are still under federal and local investigation. What are the federal, local investigation? And what are the penalties if you, if found guilty of crimes against the good citizens of Glendale? Artie, would you please show my power point? Slide number one. First, Councilman Najarian, is he hiding in the back room tonight? Pay-to-play campaign donations from Advanced Development and Investment, ADI. Next slide, please. Councilperson Aron Najarian received the highest amount, $27,000 in the year 2009 in ADI campaign donations. These are the subsidiaries of ADI. Same with Mr. Frank Quintero, Councilman. He received $23,500. And our mayor, Laura Freeman, $16,000. And let us not forget Councilman John Drayman. In 2007, he received $9,000 in campaign donations in May of 2007, the month after he was elected. And he has an alleged condo makeover for nearly $200,000. Artie, would you please show the next slide? Council reaction to ADI. Councilman Quintero, Mayor Friedman, Aron Najarian, John Drayman, and Dave Weaver all acted like, "I don't know." But they did know about Mr. John Drayman. Next slide, please. Let's talk about ADI. Who is the best developer to build affordable housing in Glendale? ADI. What company do you trust to hire investors and subcontractors for your city? What company subcontractors gave generously to Glendale candidates? ADI. And finally, what company stands accused of bilking Glendale out of millions of dollars in overcharges? No comment. The public would like to know the outcome. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
You know, normally I withhold council comments until the end, but when somebody comes up and lies and slanders, I think that the public deserves a response. First of all, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Quintero, and myself are not under federal or local investigation. Is that the case as far as you know, Mr. City Attorney?
As far as I know.
There is no investigation that we know of, and I can't imagine how you would know of an investigation that we don't know of. If you do, trot out your evidence, because I know it doesn't exist. You're lying, Mr. Mohill. Secondly, you know how much money I received from ADI? Zero. All anyone has to do is look at my campaign disclosure reports, which are public and on the city's website, to see that none of us received any money from the company ADI. Mr. Mohill is lying, and you can prove it to yourself by going to the city's website and looking at our campaign disclosures. Let's move on to more of the same, I'm sure. Herbert Milano to be followed by Harry Zavos. Listen to my voice.
Thank you, Mayor Friedman, members of the city council. I have a PowerPoint presentation on some of the history of the Glendale Water and Power. This is a brief history of the past few years stemming from around the year 2000 or so. You have the next slide?
Herbert, actually, that control the role of...
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you. A few years ago, we had an increase in the water rates, and it was justified on a presentation that it was a 20% metropolitan water district increase. That was the message that the public got. Also, in 2007, we had a report by CDM Consultants, a firm that is hired by the city of Glendale to do various different studies concerning rates and infrastructure. What was not told to the public is the following, that 20% of the metropolitan water rate increase only applies to 60% of the water that the city purchases. Therefore, if you do the calculation, it would only be a 12% effective cost increase to the city of Glendale. And this is kind of the problem that I find oftentimes, that the data is picked and presented to the ratepayers in such a way that it appears that the burden that the city has is greater than what it really is. In the year 2007, CDM, the consultants, made a report, extensive report, that stated that 222 million in capital improvement program funds needed to be made, roughly $11 million per year, because there was a near failure of the water mains. Tens of thousands of feet of outage, water mains needed to be replaced. But where did the money go? Well, the city transferred $4 million annually from water and the utility to the general fund. Tens of millions were transferred in the past 10 years. The transfer to the general fund required, were required to fund high increases in pay and pension obligations that were granted in 2001 and 2005. The ADM report listed, here's a listing of some of the pipeline and water mains that needed to be replaced. 10,800 linear feet in various different parts of the city, 10,995 feet and so on. Tens of thousands of feet of water mains in dire need of repair. The past couple of weeks, the Glendale Water and Power has presented to the general public a history of the water main installations in the city of Glendale. And if you take a look at this outcome, starting in the 1920s, Glendale has installed many miles of water mains, including, if you look carefully during the years 1942, 43, and 45. In other words, during the war, Glendale produced and installed essential infrastructure needs. But if you look carefully at the year 2000 to 2007, none. Absolutely none. No water mains, even though the water department and the Glendale Water and Fire Department have stated that having appropriate amount of throughput through these lines are essential in for firefighting situations. And of course, in case of an earthquake, you do need reliable water sources in case of fires. As you can see, 2000 to 2007, in the box there, no water mains were built. Pre-1940, there are 181 miles of pipeline. The cost per linear foot for an eight-inch water line is $65 a linear foot. So if you do the basic multiplication, just to replace those lines prior to 1940, you're talking about $55 million in critical replacements. So how come there were no replacements between 2000 and 2007? The impact on the public, high fire hazard due to lower water throughput, increased public debt, borrowing doubles the cost to replace the infrastructure, cost pass-through to families on fixed incomes, higher costs charged to multi-family owners like myself. The objectives that I think the city should follow is to restore the funds taken from the Glendale Water and Power to the general fund, report on a 12-year trend in administrative costs, report on a 12-year trend in capital improvement program postponed, apply the water rate solely on consumption, remove the hidden transfers from the water department to the general fund, lower the rates to those who conserve. Basically, the only answer is major reductions in general government expenses. So my question to you is, and the question for many individuals is, given the state of the water infrastructure being so dire, how could, in all consciousness, go out there and spend tens of millions of dollars on the smart meter system? That I wish you could answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Harry Zavos to be followed by Aram Kazazian.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a resident of Glendale. And before I talk about substantive issues, I'd like to make a personal comment. At age 79, I don't have the verb I had in younger years. I say that to explain to you, sometimes when I come to council meetings, I have to force myself to come. Coming isn't made any easier when what I might say from this podium in my allotted five minutes from the dais is misquoted without any limitation on time. And that misquote, that straw man, is used to weave arguments whose only purpose is to undermine my integrity and my credibility and to do so where I'm not given an opportunity to respond. Sometimes I handle that frustration better than others. But I come here nevertheless because I see it as my civic responsibility. And I will do so, as I have in the past, with due respect for accurate, factual statements and honest argument. This is my last word on this issue, because I have no interest in creating a running dialogue over these matters, which can only serve to divert public attention from real issues facing this city. And so if there are people for the dais who wish to comment on what I've said, I am content to leave with them the last word. Now, I had come to speak on matters having to do with the water rate restructure, but before I go on, based on what's happened here tonight, I would like to make one suggestion. I heard the argument made, there are pros and cons about having a city treasurer elected or appointed, and the same with the city clerk. And I would suggest that the same is true about a city attorney. And so if with that in mind, this council has a mind to put on the ballot the issue of an elected versus an appointed city clerk or treasurer, consistent with the sentiments expressed here tonight, I would hope they would consider putting on the ballot the issues to whether the city attorney should be elected or appointed. As all of you know, about three weeks ago last Friday, I submitted a detailed analysis of the WILDM report, which is the basis of the rate restructure and questions involved because of that report, which I felt, at least on the surface, may raise serious questions about the validity of that report. When I had not received an answer as of last Friday, three weeks later, I emailed all of you, including the city manager. And I want to thank the city manager for his reply, who has indicated that the city attorney is working on such an answer. And I would hope I would get it, albeit very late. By this Friday, it'll be four weeks, and it'll only be the weekend before this matter is taken up by the council. So tonight, what I would like to do is, in a very general manner, without the detail and the support in the written document that I supplied you, indicate, and for the benefit of the public, some of the general issues that were raised by that report. The first one that I'd like to deal with is the question of the tiered rates for single-family residents. There are five tiers, and we've been told the first two tiers are predicated on the basis that water will be used for domestic use, for indoor use. And it is true that the official policy of the state is, with respect to priority of water use, domestic use is the highest and irrigation is second. The remaining amount of the water, the remaining portion of Tier 3, 4, and 5, we are told, is water which is used to irrigate lands and which peaks where there is more consumption during the summer than average consumption.
I'm sorry, Mr. Zavos. Aram Kazazian to be followed by Terry Schlatter.
My name is Aram Kazazian. I have a couple of different items to talk about. Number one, regarding the smart mirrors. Believe me, everybody knows that was a sham that was put in front of us. The second item I want to talk to you about is not the water structure mainly at this time, but availability of water, reading the water mirrors for fire use. Even Mr. Najarian and his family has a number of buildings. Just to read the mirrors for fire line, we're talking about between $500 to $1,000 a month per building to read the water mirrors. Now, how many, how many fire lines does Disney have? 30, 40, 50? Anybody can tell me? And they're going to be paying $1,000 a month for each fire line, fire dust sprinkler system? Or are they exempt from the city's fees as they are exempt in paying property taxes part of the Glendale that was approved years ago? I'd like to report on that. Now, Disney, when they made a deal years ago, they'll come in here if they're exempt paying Glendale portion of the property tax, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. Go back in records and check it out and give me a proper answer back. I want an answer on that. So they're going to be exempt from paying $50,000 a month in water? How about the car dealers? Each car dealer is going to be paying, they have maybe two or three fire lines for their buildings, they're going to be paying $3,000 a month for a fire line to read the mirrors? And those mirrors don't function. Remember, there's zero readings. You don't know what it comes out. That's gray water. That's dirty water. Nobody can use that water for anything. They smell very bad. So, you know, it's kind of weird to do so. So look into that. Another thing also is, you never provided a forum to, for the people to fill in opposition to the water rate increase. We have got together, made a forum, and if anybody wants some, I have a bunch of them with me here, and it says, "I understand the Glendale Water and Power plans to increase revenue at the expense of the ratepayers because of physical mismanagement to wit. Due to having transferred $25 million illegally to the general fund. Due to installation of smart mirrors at a cost of $71 million. Due to poor management. Due to paying for damages to Glad Street Home Purchase for $11 million, even though it was not the water department's fault. Due to new charges for reading the mirrors at $2.5 million electronically per year versus $800,000 manually." And I believe I brought a video. I don't think the new city manager saw the video. You saw the video a while back where Stagger came in here. That's what he said it's going to cost. I'm taking right from his words, at $2.5 million to read the mirrors electronically for the next two or three years. From there on, he's going to see what the cost is going to be. So it could be... So it could even escalate, or it could stay the same, we don't know. The next item says, "Due to having borrowed $50 million and the ratepayers have to pay interest of $3 million per year for the next 30 years." This was in the budget session, too. "Due to per charter of the City of Glendale, they must transfer funds to the depreciation fund first before transferring to the general fund, and they have failed to do so. I, as a ratepayer, protest the rate increase and the mirror availability-reading charges being imposed. I also request the council provide outside oversight on the rate increase and complaints with an agency such as the Public Utility Commission." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Teri Schlotter, to be followed by Robert Fitzgerald.
My name is Teri Schlotter, and I am here to talk about smart meters. Over the weekend, I read the report that Glendale Water and Power's general manager, Glenn Steiger, submitted for tonight's agenda item 8C. Now, I realize that item has been pulled from tonight's agenda, but I still would like to make my comments. Via this report, Mr. Steiger is requesting approval from city council to assess fees to those residents who choose to opt out from the wireless smart meter program. I was shocked that the GWP report did not address or even comment on the revised proposed decision of the CPUC released on January 16th, three business days prior to the posting of tonight's agenda, that included a link to the GWP report. Council members, yesterday, I sent each one of you an email with many attachments addressing my concerns, and I will leave you with a copy of that email again tonight. In that email, I provided you with a copy of the letter that I received from Mr. Steiger in 2011 stating that GWP would follow the guidelines of the CPUC. Those current CPUC guidelines are: the sole opt-out option shall be an analog electric meter, not a smart meter, not one with the chip removed, an analog meter. The proposed monthly charge will be $10 per month, or a lower rate of $5 per month if you qualify as what they call a care customer. I should also mention that although these fees are the current position of the CPUC, they are not the final decision. There is a lot of public pressure being placed on the CPUC to eliminate these fees entirely. In fact, as part of the second phase of the CPUC proceedings, they will address whether these costs should be allocated to all ratepayers or to the utility's shareholders. GWP's current position is that they will not supply an analog electric meter. This is in direct contradiction to the letter I received from GWP stating that they would follow the CPUC's guidelines. Additionally, GWP's proposed fee schedule is almost three times that currently being recommended by the CPUC. How do you justify that? Again, this is in direct contradiction to the letter GWP sent to me and other residents. The people who are choosing to opt out have some very real and significant hypersensitivities to these meters and the smart grid program. That is why they are opting out. It is not fair to charge them for opting out of a program that is the cause of their health problems. In my email, you also received attachment H that includes the Santa Cruz County Public Health Officer's report entitled "Health Risks Associated with Smart Meters." You also received via a separate email today from another party, a link to the letter issued January 19, 2012, to the CPUC from the American Academy of Environmental Medicine. I will also leave you with a copy of that letter. It is important for you to read both of these reports and all the other attachments, of course, that I supplied. The latter report from the American Academy of Environmental Medicine states that the existing FCC guidelines for radio frequency safety, which GWP relied on, only looked at thermal tissue damage. Those guidelines are obsolete and inadequate for use in establishing public health standards. People should have a choice, just like whether or not you want to smoke tobacco. We've learned a lot about smoking tobacco in the last few decades. Sadly, I think the smart meter technology is going to follow a similar path. I urge you to restore the electric analog meters to those residents who choose to opt out. Also, I would estimate that there are roughly 200 to 300 Glendale residents who would choose to opt out. It would be an act of good faith to these residents if you do not approve the opt-out fees being recommended by GWP, and instead, direct GWP to allocate such costs among all ratepayers, just like customer service and any other overhead costs are allocated. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Fitzgerald, to be followed by Tony Passarella. Robert Fitzgerald. Okay, Tony Passarella, to be followed by Patrick Massey.
Council members and staff, my name is Tony Passarella. I'm a 25-year resident of the City of Glendale, and I'm here to talk about smart meters. I want to keep this really simple. This is really just plain common sense. When it comes to full disclosure and transparency, even Big Pharma does it better than GWP. I mean, the drug companies will tell you on national network television. I would appreciate it if you people could please pay attention to me. I mean--
Did you not want us to look at the material you handed out?
No, I didn't hand that out.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that--
Madam Mayor, that was from the previous speaker.
Sorry.
Pay attention to me while I'm speaking, and please give me the courtesy. I waited two and a half hours here to speak--
We can hear you.
Yeah, but if you're not looking at me, Mr. Weaver, I know that you're not--
Why do I have to look at you when I can hear you?
Okay, excuse me, excuse me, let's stop this. All right, give him another 20 seconds, and believe me, we are hearing everything that you say.
Even Big Pharma does it better than GWP. I mean, the drug companies will tell you on national network TV that their products could cause vomiting, seizures, breathing problems, among a laundry list of other effects, including death. We all know that drugs have different effects on different people. One person could take a drug for years with no problems, and another can take a drug one time and it could kill them. How about cigarette smokers? Some smokers live into their 90s, and others develop heart disease or lung cancer in their 30s and 40s. I ask you, Mayor and council members, is it reasonable to say the same thing about RFR, radio frequency radiation from smart meters? Some people have a sensitivity, and others may not. Just because the FCC says RFR, radio frequency radiation from smart meters, is within the health-safety guidelines, for one, does not mean it's safe for everybody. GWP got it backwards. We should have had the chance to opt in, knowing full well that the RFR radiation could have a negative health impact on some people getting too close to the device. GWP should have told us the whole truth, that our utility usage information was going to be bouncing around the neighborhood in a mesh network. GWP should have warned us that they could not prevent a hacker from intercepting this information. The spin was that the new technology was going to save ratepayers money. The truth is that many people are paying more, including me. And I provided you several weeks ago with my bills, and Mr. Najarian made a comment about me getting a big screen TV, Mr. Najarian. I did not get a big screen TV, by the way.
I don't think that was me.
If a survey was sent around by GWP with full disclosure stating the pros and cons clearly, that this device emits RFR, radio frequency radiation, and since its new technology has not been fully tested over a period of time. See, those same people that take the drugs when they're given a full disclosure, irregardless of the potential health effects, they choose to still take that drug. Well, maybe if we'd have given full disclosure, maybe those same people would have chose to take the smart meter because of the perceived benefits, which I believe there are none, by the way, only negative. So I ask you, Mayor and council members, do the right thing and give the very small group of people, 0.01%, according to the staff report, the opportunity to opt out at no cost to the ratepayer. That's the right thing to do. It may even help your reelection in the 2013 campaign. Mayor Freeman and Mr. Contero, you just mentioned fairness in the signage issue not 30 minutes ago. Is it fair to have people that are suffering health-related issues in regards to these smart meters? Is it fair to charge them money to opt out? And Scott Ochoa, I hope you have some influence in here, sir, and please do some research on Agenda 21, please. Thank you. My name is Tony Passarella.
Patrick Massey, followed by Shane Gregory.
Before I start, Artie, you're giving me 20 seconds more than I should have. Thank you. Mayor Freeman and members of city council, my name is Patrick Massey. I'm a Glendale resident. I want to publicly thank all those individuals that emailed me last week, and I really appreciate your comments. Tonight, we will continue with answering question number two, Mr. Garcia. Has the City of Glendale Neighborhood Services ever stopped a fully permitted roofing project and wrongfully accused the owner of not having a permit? The answer to that question is yes. Tonight, I'm going to take you back to January of 2004, and I will discuss a very painful day for me and my family. On January 12 of 2004, we secured a roofing permit for our house, which had two layers of wood shingles. Couple of my friends who are firefighters warned us against wood shingles, especially older ones that can catch fire. And in fact, the City of Glendale currently has a code specifically stating you cannot even have wood shingles. So in 2004, we decided to do a complete re-roofing, taking out the wood shingles, replacing the old plywood with new plywood and new shingles. So that morning, we went to the city, we got our permits, and the project started later on that day. However, at around 2:30 in the afternoon, a member of the Neighborhood Services approached us and said that we had to stop the work. We asked him why. He said, "You don't have a permit." We said, "Yes, we do. We do have a permit." So this man, without permission, walked into the property, called down all the workers on the roof, and said, "That's it. You need to stop." Now, the question at hand is, how come a permit that we had was not recognized? This individual was so rude and condescending that he did not even want to call the city to confirm when he was asked to do so. Here's a man with two cell phones and a walkie-talkie on his belt, most likely paid for taxpayer money, and his response was, "It's not my responsibility to check. I already know." It was an automatic thing with this guy. He knew somehow, right? Well, no. But things like this go on all the time, and I know that we do have certain council members that have championed the Neighborhood Services and all they do. I'm sure they do a good job, but you have to understand, 20% to 30% of the statistics you're receiving are bogus. 20% to 30% of violation notices that they tell you they've gotten, and, you know, people are conforming, are bogus. There are a lot of newcomers in this community who are afraid of government. These newcomers in the old country were discriminated against by government. That's why they're here. It's the American dream, right? Equality, fairness. So they're easy picking for Neighborhood Services. And this thing has been going on for over 30 years now. Because there are individuals, when they get this violation notice, they get nervous. They don't want to fight government because, remember, in the old country, you disappeared if you questioned anything that the government did. And that mentality has carried that group of population here in this country. And for Neighborhood Services, it's very easy. They show up, they make some threats, they make some racial slurs as they're leaving your property, and they think you're going to take it. Well, as a commissioner at that time, I took it, because commissioners in this city don't have the right to talk or complain, do they? But no longer. We will expose everything that has gone on in Neighborhood Services because it's about time. Mr. Ochoa, I'm going to submit to you the documents. I'm also going to show you how Neighborhood Services also violates your privacy by actually taking pictures of your property, a fully permitted roofing property, and keeps it as a dossier. This is what taxpayers pay for. Pictures of a property fully permitted for roofing that Neighborhood Services likes to take a picture of and keep it in its hard drives. By the way, this is from the City of Glendale. This was obtained legally. We paid for it, and the City of Glendale has a dossier on what happened that day. So you might want to check it out, Mr. Ochoa. That's where our tax money is pretty much going to. So I'm going to submit this to you. Again, these dark episodes are going on even today, and we need to stop it.
Thank you. Shane Gregory, followed by Kiku Awada.
Good evening, counsel. Madam Mayor, my name is Shane Gregory, and I am a smart meter refugee. I have lost my home of 23 years, and I have been unable to secure other housing for five months and 23 days. So I continue to speak on this subject because I have very personal investment in it. I'm here tonight to comment on GWP's motion and resolution regarding smart meters. I disagree with it on many points. Number one, GWP states that the CPUC has decided against offering customers analog meters as part of its opt-out recommendations. This is incorrect. Perhaps GWP is unaware of this and has mistakenly informed council to the contrary. I hope that GWP is taking a position of complete transparency and that this was merely an oversight, albeit a very important one. Number two, GWP states that, quote, "Only a small set of its customer base, less than 1/10 of 1%, has voiced objections to the smart meter program." While this may be true, I believe strongly that if customers of GWP and other utilities that have deployed smart meters actually knew of the potential for adverse health effects posed by the meters, there would be a substantially larger segment of ratepayers opposed to the program. One significant problem is that people may not have been made aware that the recent headaches, insomnia, heart palpitations, difficulty concentrating, ear ringing, and a host of other health problems that they may be experiencing could be as a direct result of the meters. Thousands of complaints describing these symptoms have begun to affect people in areas where smart meters are installed, and they are on file, both in California and other areas where smart meters have recently been deployed. If GWP's customers decide to opt out for health reasons and are charged by GWP to do so, this would be discriminatory, prejudicial, and extortionate. It would not be fair, humane, or legal for council to agree to such a policy. Number four, digital meters with radio-off configurations do not mitigate the health hazards posed by the meters, and as such, analog meters must be offered to customers. Digital meters employ pulsed RF to gather data, even if they do not transmit it. Digital meters employ pulsed RF to gather data, even if they do not transmit it. Pulled RF causes problems for biological organisms, including human bodies. Digital meters with radio off do nothing to remove this hazard. Furthermore, it has been found that digital meters can alter the quality of electricity delivered by subjecting it to switching mode power supplies, resulting in a phenomenon known as dirty electricity. Human beings are vulnerable to transients, voltage spikes, and other phenomena created by this poor quality electricity. This is not a factor with the safe and reliable analog meters. GWP, along with many other utilities in California, rely upon a study performed by the CCST. This study relied on data supplied by EPRI, an organization that is funded by approximately 30 utility companies. As such, this was not an independent study, and it is flawed in many ways. One major flaw is that the CCST relies on FCC standards pertaining to RF's thermal effects and not on the type of RF emitted by smart meters, non-thermal. But this is found to cause bioeffects at fractions of the standards set by the FCC. Furthermore, the CCST ignored the opinions of a distinguished panel of international scientists and physicians, even after it solicited these opinions. For GWP to rely upon the CCST study and for council to accept this reliance in its decision-making process would be negligent. In summary, I believe that the council should not accept GWP's motion as it stands for the many reasons I've just cited, but principally because it does not adequately address the threat to public health posed by the meters. Secondly, it is discriminatory, prejudicial, and extortionate in its assertion that Glendale residents should be charged for protecting their health and the health of their children. And number three, it does not include the option of analog meters and is incorrect in its statement that the CPUC recommends against them. Thank you for making this opportunity for me.
Thank you. Kiku Iwata, and then my last card is Sharon Weissman.
City Council, thank you for this time to speak. My name is Kiku Iwata. I'm here to speak about smart meters, and I'm a member of Burbank Action and a member of also residents against smart meters, the Los Angeles County Chapter. I emailed this to you earlier this evening, and you can read it here if you want. The email version has some links that you can click, and it may be easier for you to access some of the documents I referenced. This is regarding tonight's. It was supposed to be on the agenda. It was pulled, I was told. GWP's a report on smart meters. And I just wanted maybe to tell the, maybe some of the members of the public, we're in public tonight, that the CPUC at the state level has revised its proposed decision on smart meters options, and supports analogs as the option to consider at this time. So the fact that GWP's report didn't have analogs at all on it is a major flaw, and you need to make sure that it includes options that will be reflected in the state options. BWP, by the way, in Burbank, coming from Burbank, they decided to hold off on presenting any recommendations as well. They decided on Tuesday, and they've, so I'm glad that GWP did pull it tonight. They're not pushing this forward, but I just want you to remain vigilant on this, and please explore some of the documents and recommendations that we're presenting. One of the residents mentioned, the Santa Cruz County Department of Health, they issued a health report, and that's a doctor and a physician who was behind that report. Please read some of the recommendations and how they find that there are health concerns, and there's actually peer-reviewed scientific studies that he cites that support that. It's not just, you know, things that are not supported by good science. And it also helps confirm why we should be, as residents, concerned about smart meters and their health effects, and why a growing number of local governments are concerned as well. And the staff report that I have the link to, please read it, because Santa Cruz County also has a moratorium in there that explains the reasons why governments are opposing smart meters. And it also includes, it includes a petition that local governments are right now being encouraged to sign and join, and that also opposes smart meters. And the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors actually agreed today to join that petition and to also approve the moratorium. Smart meters, I also want to bring up the fact that they could affect real estate values. I have, the link there, you can go and see, there's the Marin County Association, sorry, the Marin County Association of Realtors, and they have signed a letter, the CPUC, stating that they support analog options for residents, the right to keep analog meters with no cost. And you need to consider that if you don't allow analog meters, it'll present a potential real estate problem for Glendale. In fact, I wrote to, I corresponded with Audora Baill, she's a real estate expert here in the local area, and she said, "From a real estate perspective, it can potentially have a devastating impact on the housing market here in Glendale and Burbank. If the rest of California is allowed to have analogs and sure Glendale doesn't, who would want to live here and who would want to invest in housing here when you can go to the neighboring areas and have a house that's free from smart meters?" So if you could think about that and explore that. GWP also will lose the public trust if it does not support analog options. GWP, in its letters, to people, had told them that they were going to supply analogs, and so they have to follow through with that to maintain the trust that they have, or that they have left with the residents. And my recommendations that I've included here is that they reject GWP's proposed smart meter options and their fees and their resolution. Residents should read that resolution. It's very scary, actually, if you start reading it. That the city council support electromechanical analog options for GWP customers without charging extra costs, fees, or higher rates. And they asked staff to do an independent health study. You have the power to do that, to look into this independently. To request that GWP come back with its recommendations when the CPUC comes up with its final decision on smart meter options. And in the meantime, you can talk to GWP and ask them if they can do what Central Main Power did while the CPUC there was deciding on options. Central Main Power took the high road and allowed residents who wanted to have their analog meters restored or back, they allowed them to do that without charging them. So you can ask GWP to do that, too, and if they're saying that they're such a small percentage, then why not let them? Thank you, and please follow through and read some of those links and documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Weissman's my last card.
Mayor Friedman, council members and staff, I'm Sharon Weissman from far north Glendale, speaking as an individual. First, I want to remind anyone who doesn't already know that while Mr. Mohill has been convicted of lewd conduct and trespass, as has Barry Allen of counterfeiting several years ago, and I can't remember what Richard Aspiru was convicted of, but I know John Draymond has never even been arrested, much less tried or convicted of anything. And I'm sorry to be redundant, but the lies keep being repeated, so I feel I have to keep repeating the truth to counteract that. And you can see BarryAllenFacts.com for more information, the website my husband put up. And again, to remind people most everyone knows, ADI is being investigated by the FBI. Mr. Mohill and his mentor Barry Allen don't need to keep repeating over and over these kinds of things. And again, it's been mentioned before, but apparently, Mr. Mohill still doesn't understand that subcontractors are not equal to the company that hires them, and they're different And Vanguardians seems to be very upset with the next Glendale election, which by my calculation is 15 months away. And as some of the recordings, Mr. Allen livestreamed from his apartment to the world over the internet, there's a lot of discussions, and I think it's really sad that a recently elected city councilman or within the last year seems so worried about the next election and subsequent elections to the point of obsessing over who might be running and, you know, what's going on there. And personally, even though it is some time away, in these times with city funding so scarce, I'm fairly happy with the three incumbents we have. If nobody else applies, we don't need to spend money on an election, and we'd be fine just going forward. Again, that's just my opinion. And it's amazing to me that Mr. Zavos has the hypocrisy to mention a straw man argument when he's associated with a Vanguardian organization that seems to specialize in making up issues to rail against. If you remember, a few years ago, Mr. Allen was going around knocking on doors in Montrose looking for a cancer cluster, because he was trying to gather, again, I think, it's my opinion, most of what Mr. Allen does is in order to get contributions from Mr. Allen. But he was worrying people, "Are your pets getting cancer? Are you getting cancer?", looking for a cancer cluster in Montrose. More recently, these smart meter health concerns, I think, are being stirred up unnecessarily. And please, as you're going forward, don't make the sensible citizens of Glendale, the 99 percent, don't make us subsidize the poor unfortunates who think that smart meters are causing their various health issues. They should have to pay for their own unique needs. And again, personally, the symptoms they've been mentioning, I think, are mostly caused by just modern life or driving, and Glendale can generate headaches. But maybe recently I had another thought. Perhaps it's reading Vanguardians that gives them palpitations and upsets them. Anyone who likes the truth could be upset if they spend too much time reading that. One thing that bothers me also about this group that keeps complaining about how much, you know, tax money is being wasted, it's Mr. Milano that, again, repeating, everybody remembers, he joined and prolonged lawsuits and appeals, even though the city won, it cost the city $600,000. And Vanguardians people file, well, not only them, but the total result of public information requests to Glendale is three times that of LA. That's just burning through our tax money to promote special interests, special agendas. They haven't found out any corruption. They haven't uncovered any criminal activity, except the only criminal activity that came to mind was Mr. Allen's from years ago. Barry Allen's followers complained about the misuse of tax money, yet their main generator is some of the most frivolous expenses I can think of in this city. Perhaps they're bitter at having lost elections, Mr. Mohill, Mr. Milano, Mr. Philpott, and we recently found out that Mr. Allen's father lost a city council election when Mr. Allen was a young man. It might have set him on a wrong path. I don't know. And congratulations for the Glendale Beautiful Awards, and I want to thank the staff and all the volunteers for all your time. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. That's my last card. Any council comments?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
You know, I'm trying to deal with the smart meter issue, and I don't think anyone on this council has said that we're not going to permit an opt-out. I think what this council did is, in light of the impending final determination by the CPUC, we've decided to, in good faith to the community, delay our discussion of that item. And it seems like we're getting beat up here for what, I'm not sure. And what I'm hearing is that there's an, I mean, the initial, the crux of the complaint about smart meters is that there's a city instrumentality which has been placed on the property of a resident that causes them adverse health effects. What happens to that person who's allergic to an oak tree and the city plants an oak tree in front of their house? In many instances, anaphylactic shock can lead to death, much quicker than perhaps this exposure to the radio frequency radiation. What are we supposed to do with that? And I think there's something else that those complaining about smart meters haven't really determined. I'm not discounting your symptoms, but there's something called electromagnetic radiation. And at the same time the smart meters were placed in, we boosted our power grid from 5,000 volts to 12,000, or 12,000 to 20,000. It's one of those figures, at the same time. Those lines that run right above our homes, and I don't think it's possible to discount that that, in fact, is what the problem is. My research is that the symptoms are very much the same. So before we blame the smart meters, let's see what's going on in the voltage. But let's say it is the voltage. What is the remedy, then? Are we supposed to de-power, energize our lines down to the previous 5,000-volt level? I don't know. I'm just raising these questions out. The speakers, I think the value is that they did raise these questions, at least in my mind. I'm not sure where we go with this. We're all assuming it's smart meters. It may be something else altogether. As far as Mr. Mohill goes, poor Mr. Mohill is being played like he's never been played before. If he only heard the words of Barry Allen in those tapes, essentially calling him a buffoon. It's on the tapes, folks. It's on the Barry Allen Facts website. I don't think he would be here defending Barry Allen. The fact is that the rock has been lifted, and people are seeing this organization for what they truly are. Not a watchdog group, which they claim their public charity 501(c)(3) status, but an attack group trying to demean those that disagree with them. Well, if you agree with them, they'll leave you alone, and that's in the tapes, too. But they're really striking hard. They don't know what to do. The allegations that three of us are under federal, state, local, international investigation for crimes is a crock, and let's all really understand what's going on. It's the death throes of this organization and the death throes of the followers of this organization when they realize that their leader has been uncovered and really disclosed for what he truly is. Thank you.
Just going to make one quick statement to the smart meter folks. I know a bunch of them had to leave. I know that most of the people that have come in believe what they're saying desperately, and I appreciate that, and I don't want to demean what they believe. At the same time, this has been going on for several months, and I have yet to see, presented by any of you, by any of them, any of the studies that they refer to. I haven't seen one study about the effects of smart meters or this type of radio frequencies. If it's out there, bring it on. This is the time to show it to us. We've been shown YouTube videos of dying plants, and we're supposed to make policy on that? If there are really studies, show them, because they haven't been presented. The only study that anyone's brought up is a German, a paper in a German psychological journal that looked at 15 people to see if they could tell if there was electromagnetic radio frequencies. Obviously, not peer-reviewed, not a large enough sample to prove anything, and really just an abstract. That's it. That's all we've gotten. So if, you know, if you're going to get up and scare people every week, week after week, and make them think that if they're not sleeping, it's because of smart meters, not by the way, the internet modem in their house, the wireless modem, which is the same type of radiation, and not their cellphone, which is a lot more radiation than they're holding against their head, but smart meters. Bring us the studies. Bring us the studies about internet modems, which is the same thing making people sick. Bring us a study about microwave ovens making people sick. Or even the wires, which I think has been completely debunked at this point, and nobody even believes that anymore. No one even claims that anymore. But yes, it's been, I mean, that's not even something that people talk about anymore. But in any case, I would like to see the studies. This is the time. You know, convince me. But don't come in week after week and make these claims and scare people without showing any evidence. That's all I ask.
I'd like to move the city attorney, B, and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement to utilize legal services of Zapia Law Firm, France Edward Zapia, to represent the interests of the appointing authority before the Civil Service Commission in a personnel matter and incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain the P camp for the handling of said matter.
Second.
Motion, second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Menuchaian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Thank you.
Mayor Friedman. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I didn't get a chance to respond.
I said yes.
I just wanted to make a comment. Earlier during the discussion on the city clerk and city attorney, I was standing on the other side of the podium, because as a city attorney, it advised me it was a matter that would directly affect salary employment. city attorney had advised me, it was a matter that would directly affect salary, employment, and other issues, and so I spoke to you as a member of the public. But from this side of the dice, I now want to say that there was a comment made that cast a pallid doubt or assertions on the integrity of the election process by one of the speakers, and specifically, a very well-respected member of our community who often helps us out on elections, and that's my predecessor Doris Tweed. We're all deserving of criticism at various times for a myriad of issues, I'm sure, but I can assure you and the public that Mrs. Tweed is undeserving of the accusations which were cast upon her today. At no time have polling locations in Glendale been shifted to manipulate a certain outcome for an election. Polling locations get shifted for compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, because buildings are under construction, because a particular location is unavailable for that election, but not for the manipulation of results, and I don't want anyone in the public to have a thought, a grain of thought, that either Ms. Tweed or anyone else in the city clerk's office at any time has taken part in that type of activity. It's absolutely false. So, I believe that it would be remiss if I did not make that comment, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. With that, I would like to adjourn in the memory of Roberto Lee Draymond-Burkenheim.
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.